Good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2025 regular meeting of the Brookline School Committee. First on our agenda is 1A. On our consent agenda, pass records, November 6th. We polled 1B, and then we have 1C, accounts payable. Can we take 1A and 1C together, or is there an objection? Okay. I'll move the consent agenda, 1A and 1C. Is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne, second. Suzanne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report and the introduction of the 25, 2025 recipients of the MASSS Certificate of Excellence.
All right, thank you. So one of the highlights of the annual school committee calendar is the presentation of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award for Excellence to Brookline High School seniors who have distinguished themselves from their peers. This award is granted in all high schools across the Commonwealth, and the number of awards is dependent on the total size of the graduating class. We have three students who will be receiving this award, and I believe we have one present, so we will start with that student. We are honored this evening to welcome the 2025 awardees. We have Aliana Beatrics, Aaliyah Lakin, and then we have Aiden Sullivan. The MASSS Superintendent Awards are reserved for some of our most accomplished students, students who have demonstrated not just their academic potential and integrity, but who have also shown great determination, perseverance, and strength of character. We are delighted that we have students here, joined by their families and support networks and by many others who are watching the live stream of this meeting. We have BHS staff who have prepared special remarks about each of our awardees. And so at this time, I invite Aiden Sullivan to come forward, and we have Dan Resman, who will speak about you and share your accomplishments with us.
Testing?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hello, Aiden. Aiden Sullivan is an outstanding individual, and he has grown tremendously during his time as a student within the public schools of Brookline. His journey has been uncommonly challenging due to circumstances beyond his control, but he has always risen to overcome whatever difficulty he has encountered. At a young age, Aiden's grandparents became the guardians for him and for his younger sister. Sadly, soon after being taken in by his grandparents, Aiden suffered the tragic loss of his grandfather. At that point, it would have been understandable if Aiden had just turned inward and away from the world that had proven so cruel in his young life. However, Aiden has always held tightly to a belief that things can get better and that he needed to be a support to his family. And no matter what, he has always remained determined to grow, develop his skills, and find success despite hardship. Over the years, Aiden has worked diligently in his classes and as a support for friends and family. He always listens before he speaks, gives careful consideration to the impact of his words and actions on others, and never needs to be the loudest voice or the center of attention. He has become a beloved member of our school community and a role model for younger students. Aiden truly stands out among his peers as an exceptional human being, and we are incredibly proud of him. Aiden Sullivan.
And you get a really lovely, and you also receive this really lovely certificate. Yes, congratulations. Oh, can we do all together? I'm wondering, do we have Aaliyah? Yes, Aaliyah. Okay, great. So, Aaliyah, I would like to invite you to the podium. And we have Kareem Azab, who's going to speak from online. So we've got you. Where did Aaliyah go? Oh, okay. You can go ahead if you'd like.
Awesome. Everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so I have the pleasure of introducing Aaliyah. Aaliyah is an amazing young woman who's had a remarkable journey in her life. At a young age, Aaliyah was separated from her mother, and after her grandmother passed away, she was placed in foster care. These experiences had led to Aaliyah struggling to succeed in school. However, at the turn of sophomore year at BHS, Aaliyah began a reunification process with her mother, who she lives with now and is surely beaming with so much pride, and that sparked such a positive change in both Aaliyah's life and her academic success. Aaliyah's turnaround from freshman year has been so impressive that she is currently on track to graduate from Brookline High School as a member of the National Honor Society. No pressure, Aaliyah. In addition to being a brilliant academic, I've rarely met someone in life with such wit and with such sarcastic abilities. No doubt, she has grown as much as a student as she has a human being, and for that, I am beyond honored to be witness to her receiving this award tonight. In her spare time, Aaliyah is an electric actress and is a regular performer in school productions. If you see her around, ask her about her performances. Aaliyah will no doubt meet the next phase of her life with the joy, wit, and success that those of us at BHS, Winter Palace, and Metco have come to love. Aaliyah, I'm so proud of you, and no one's more deserving of this award than you. Congratulations.
And also, you're in the BHS certificate. Relax. Please. Yes.
I think they're here.
Yes, all right. So, Aliana, Aliana, oh, sorry, Beatrics. So I'm going to invite you to the podium. And, okay, Paul and Kara are going to speak to you to tell us about you. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kara Lopez and myself, Paul Epstein, we are here tonight to introduce and to celebrate Aliana, as she's honored with this prestigious superintendent's award. But really and truly, we're here representing dozens of faculty and staff members who are card-carrying members of the Aliana Fan Club. And as you wove your way through Brookline High and charted your own chorus, which included stints on the fourth floor in SWS and also in the cozy eighth corner in the second floor, and even under the bridges of the Charles River as you rode on the crew team, you just seemed to stockpile friends and teacher admirers along the way. And you have a truly unique ability to perfectly balance selflessness and self-actualization. In a typical meeting with me, you would sit in your favorite chair, eating your favorite snack, which was the chocolate chip cookies just out of the oven, and you might whip out your phone and show me the Gazan families that you were regularly Venmo-ing money to, and then you would swipe and you would show me the gorgeous campus of the Dana Hall School in Wellesley that you had researched completely on your own and applied to, and thank God she didn't switch schools, she stayed at Brookline High. But, you know, many books have been written about grit and resilience in students, how you can cultivate that special ingredient, kids who, for whom failure is not an option. And I think they could have saved a lot of trees by just using you as a case study. It's no surprise to me that you're seriously considering a career in health services, because your combination of intellectual curiosity and generosity of spirit is a perfect fit for the helping professions. You are that proverbial young woman in a hurry, always searching out the next internship or summer enrichment program or just fun adventure. And I don't know if you didn't want me to say this, but one time you were in such a hurry that you even practiced driving before you had your license. And, don't worry, it was just in the garage and the damage was minor. Sorry. But, Aliana, we are so proud of you. Congratulations to you, to your mother, and to your entire family. And I think Kara Lopez has some additional remarks.
I'm not going to get you in trouble like Paul did. In the three, in the short three months I've known Aliana Beatrics, I've been fortunate to witness an unforgettable student defined by her beautiful spirit and her infectious motivation for self-improvement. I met Aliana when she joined ACE in September. Right away, I was struck by her profound wisdom. She has a rare understanding of the connection between well-being and success, a philosophy she summed up perfectly with her own guided belief, and I quote, "You need happiness to achieve a goal instead of achieving a goal to become happy." I wish I could take credit for that insight, but it's entirely Aliana's. In fact, it's the exact philosophy that I have been spending my last 27-year career striving to instill in my students. Aliana is truly wiser than her years. Despite facing profound personal upheaval, Aliana has displayed tremendous resilience, refusing to let life's challenges get in the way of her achieving wisdom, health, and joy. Her intellectual promise is magnified by her personal strength and her fierce focus, allowing her to maintain success through significant challenges. What truly sets Aliana apart is how she transforms her own experiences into action, actively giving back to her community. Aliana serves as the president for the Compassion and Action Club, which creates gifts for patients with terminal illnesses and plans fundraisers for low-income families, explicitly aiming to, in Aliana's words, "help those who find themselves falling through the cracks." This profound dedication to both self-improvement and compassionate service is why Paul and I are so absolutely thrilled that we are presenting you with the Massachusetts Superintendent's Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our students, their school community, the broader community here to support them. I also want to thank all our staff that were here to celebrate you, and it's my honor to present, I want to say all your names again, Aliana Beatrics, Aaliyah Lakin, and Aiden Sullivan. There you are. Thank you to Kara Lopez, Paul Epstein, Dan Resman, and Kareem, Kareem, are you up there? Azab, for coming out to, you know, on behalf of our students and all of you that are here, which is very, very cool tonight. Congratulations.
So we're going to pause for photos and then get back with public comment.
Do you want to do some group photos, fellas?
Yeah.
Oh, Olive, you do photos?
Oh.
Something that can get posted.
I think I'm okay.
I want to be the towel over you.
I think it's perfect for you all.
Hey, Bob. How you doing?
Oh, yeah.
Nice to see you. How you doing? You having fun in here?
Hey, Bob. How you doing?
Oh, yeah.
Nice to see you. How you doing? You having fun in here?
Having fun.
Yeah.
Good.
Paul, you want to have a photo?
Sure do.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to invite Deputy Superintendent Susan Gibbons to the podium. She has a transportation update, or an update on transportation, to share with everyone.
I thought we'd start the meeting with some other good news. Not that it can top what just happened, but we've been working with South Brookline parents to improve service for the high school, and we're delighted that we've been able to come up with a plan that'll achieve our goals. So when we first met, we decided it would be important to, like, clarify what our hopes were, so that when we got to the end of our process, we would know that either we achieved it in full or in part, and we'd understand why. So our goals were to keep the routes, as you know, within, you know, approximately 30 minutes in length. Some will be a little bit longer, but the goal is around 30 minutes. To reduce overcrowding in the PM bus, to shift stops and routes on the middle AM route so that it would be closer to the start of school, we were hoping we might be able to shift that by 30 minutes. And that we also wanted to eliminate the waitlist. Can't get any cuter than that, can you? So we've come up with a plan that achieves all of those goals. It's taken a little bit of time and a lot of conversation, but we have gotten ourselves in a place where we're going to be able to move the middle bus closer to the start of school, eliminate the waitlist, as I said, and on the PM, balance out the buses and keep the routes about 30 minutes in length. So we're just delighted that we find ourselves here. So we're going to implement the changes on the 15th of December. We'll be communicating with families, you know, the changes in bus stops and routes over the course of the next week, so that there's ample time for people to get information about where the bus stops will be and at what time. And so I'm happy to report that. But before I end, I do want to thank Julie Jettie, Jen Roberts, Carolyn Thall, Joe Albuquerque, our Director of Operations and his staff, for all the time they've committed to coming up with this plan. So, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share the outcome of the meetings that have been taking place since the last time I made my report.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
And having been part of some of the conversations, I just want to thank you, Zee, Joe, Principal Ola. It was really so gratifying and nice to have community members have the opportunity to work with you and your staff, get to know you a little bit, and work through a problem in a really positive way. So it's truly appreciated and it's really meaningful to get to work that way and solve something. So thank you again.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. Just as a reminder, we don't respond to public comments, we take it in, and if you are out in the audience in our virtual audience watching, we read all the emails, so you can also email us at school underscore committee at PSBMA dot org if you're not able to join the meeting. First up, we have Thomas Reed, who's the Director of Driscoll Extended Day. And once you get settled, Betsy will count your three minutes down.
It's easy to hold it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So I have here an open letter, signed in just the last 24 hours by over 100 members of our community, including Dave Euclid and some other key stakeholders. So, "Dear members of the school committee, my name is Thomas Reed, Executive Director of the Driscoll Extended Day Program, DEDP. DEDP is a private nonprofit childcare program not governed by the town. We have served the Driscoll community since 1972 and currently support about 180 children each day. Roughly 40% of the school's elementary population. I'm writing on behalf of our program and other renters who are experiencing significant ongoing challenges with after-school building access and security that we'd like to bring to the school committee's attention. From 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. each weekday, there are no school or town staff on-site to manage entry into Driscoll School. As a result, DEDP staff end up handling access for our families each day. This means we are also constantly interacting with anyone else who needs to enter the building after hours. This includes non-DEDP caregivers, school staff attending meetings, outside instructors, students arriving for lessons or practices, playground users, community members, et cetera. At present, DEDP staff are effectively responsible for overseeing entry for all after-hours visitors, a task that extends far beyond our program's role and capacity. The new Driscoll building was designed and promoted as a community resource, and is widely rented by community stakeholders, choirs, churches, theater groups, music lessons, and town meetings. These renters all face the same building access issues and often rely on DEDP staff for help. While we are committed to supporting a larger Driscoll community, it should not fall to DEDP to manage building access for every individual entering or exiting after-school hours. Driscoll School is located at the busy intersection of Washington Street and Beacon Street. This area is served by public buses and the Green Line, and with public transportation comes a high volume of non-school foot traffic. Combine this with heavy rental use and no authorized PSB personnel present to manage building egress, and significant security risks become clear. The building is heavily used, as Driscoll cannot depend on patchwork voluntary coverage to manage who comes through the doors. Implementing a shared access solution is unfortunately no longer just a matter of convenience, but one of safety, equity, and operational feasibility for DEDP. Current town policy requires each renter organization to manage its own access plan. With up to 10 programs in the building after school, this would mean each group hiring its own access staff for pulling educators away from instruction and ratio. It also leaves families, including young children and older adults, often waiting outside in bad weather. This system is simply not sustainable. Every program renting space in the building requires predictable, secure entry to function, and the current system is unreliable, disjointed, and comes at the expense of staff capacity and student experience. Our proposal: We would like to discuss adding a small proportional fee to Driscoll's rental rates to fund a shared building-wide access security staff member. A unified, town-managed system would eliminate confusion, reduce risk, and ensure that all rental program communities experience the same safe, reliable access. It is also an efficient and significantly less expensive option for each program than hiring its own person. Lastly, if the town employs this person, the town has immediate oversight of all parties entering and exiting the school. A shared staff member would ensure consistent entry management, allowing the programs to focus on their students instead of managing the door. We're also open to other suggestions and solutions that strengthen security, support educators, and uphold the community purpose for which the new Driscoll building was designed. We look forward to continued collaboration and dialogue with the school committee regarding this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to hearing your thoughts."
Thank you. Next, we have Lee Simons. Next, we have Lee Simons.
Shorter than Thomas. "Thank you for your time again today. My name is Lee Simons. I'm the mom of a Driscoll 3rd grader and I'm a member of the Driscoll Site Council. I'm here on behalf of the 80 parents of Driscoll 3rd graders who signed an open letter to you last month about the size of the Driscoll 3rd grade. Their cohort has actually grown in just the three and a half weeks since we sent that letter, and I understand all three classes will have 24 students each by the end of this month. It is the second-largest grade in the district, second to the Hays 5th grade with two classes at 25 students each. The Driscoll 3rd grade is bound to have 25 students per class or more by the end of the school year. We are asking that an additional class be added for them for when they are 4th graders next year in order to make class sizes more manageable and equitable. As you are likely aware, the current Driscoll 4th and 5th grade cohorts each added one class this school year. Why the growth in these middle elementary years at Driscoll? In addition to students new to the district, the Driscoll Middle Elementary grades historically receive several mid-year transfers from other PSB schools for Driscoll's amazing lab program, which begins in 3rd grade. This is predictable growth we should be planning for, particularly because Driscoll was built to be a four-section school. There's an empty 3rd grade classroom across the hall from my son's class with 24 students. The same is true in the 4th grade section of the school. My son and I were talking earlier this week about me coming here to speak with you about adding additional class for his grade cohort for when they are in 4th grade next year. I asked him what he thought you should know from a kid about what it's like to be in a class of 24 students. Without hesitation, he said, "It's kind of stressful." I asked him why, and he said, "Because the space is limited and there are so many kids. There's not much space to walk in the classroom because desks are in the way and that his view is blocked." He also told me it was okay to share. I'm looking because he's going to walk in the room from Kung-Fu any minute. He also told me it was okay to share with you that he has ADHD and that for kids with ADHD, it's even harder to focus in a class this big because there are more people and it's more crowded. When there are more kids, it's more likely someone is goofing around, making it very easy to get distracted. While our district policy tries to limit elementary classes to 25 kids, the classrooms themselves aren't built for that many kids. The rooms themselves are smaller in the new building, and there really is limited room to move with that many desks in the classroom. There are also only 22 cubbies for each class, indicating that is what the architects envisioned as a realistic maximum class size. And of course, that's nothing to say about how additional students affect teacher bandwidth, which I'd argue is the most important factor in all of this. My son is not what I call shy, so being reluctant to participate hasn't been something that affects him, but I know from other parents that their children are hesitant to participate because of the amount of kids in their classes. I know the budget will be tight again this year, but we urge you to fund an additional teacher for this cohort of Driscoll kids so that there's more equity for their class sides as compared to other classes across the district. Thank you."
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Benoit.
Thanks, Lee. Good evening. I'm Eric Benoit, and I appreciate the chance to speak. I'm the father of Remy, who's also in the 3rd grade class at Driscoll. My wife and I bought a house in Brookline for many reasons, largely because of the schools. And we've been here since Remy was in, before kindergarten. We've been thrilled. It's been an outstanding experience. You know, the Driscoll School has been excellent. The rebuild is really phenomenal, and I've got to say that Remy loves to go across the street. He gets a little bit of responsibility and everything like that to be able to go and use the facility. I would actually echo what Thomas was saying about, you know, Remy's in the after-school program, and yes, you guys are always buzzing us in and everything like that. So I didn't know that was in the books, but I'd support that. I'm here to kind of throw my hat as a parent to support what Leah said, is that I think that the kids would benefit from another class in this cohort. You know, like I said, we've had a really great experience here, but one of the things that's happened this year, more so than in previous years, is the number of disruptions. As the class sizes have gotten bigger, I hear more and more about the number of disruptions that happen in class that interfere with the kids' learning. Sometimes it's kids having to go across the hall to that empty classroom while, you know, teachers have to come and deal with some, you know, whether it's behavioral issues or whatnot. I think one of the things that I hear from my son is that it's just become a little much for the teachers to handle. The teachers have so many things on their plate, they have so much that they have to do. And as the class sizes have gotten bigger, sometimes it's harder to incorporate everybody there. And, you know, kids have different needs, and sometimes it really becomes sort of disruptive. You know, we've had a great experience and we'd hate for things to be diluted. So I'm just here as a dad to kind of echo what Leah has said, and I think some other parents are going to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nima Saadi, and if I mispronounce that, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Nima Saadi, and my son Sahand is also in 3rd grade at Driscoll. Thank you very much for your time. I also would like to talk about the class size of the 3rd graders. This cohort, from the beginning kindergarten, have been always over 20, 21, 22, but in previous years, the concern was less given the type of activities they had. And also, for the first couple of years, there was teacher helpers. But this year, I keep hearing over and over from Sahand about stuff that is going on and is reflective of the class size. For example, several times, he's been saying that they are waiting for their turn to ask questions or say something, but they don't get a chance because there are too many kids and there are too many questions, and the teacher doesn't have the time to get to everyone. The other thing is, for example, when they want to transition inside the class or outside, given the number of the kids that needs to be prepared or leave or get ready, there is this rush that they feel like, "Get ready, get ready, get ready," which is not the teacher's fault, it's just the reflection of the number of the kids that need to be prepared. And as I also echo what I heard from Leah, that Sahand many times feels this pressure or stress of the being ready, getting ready in the class, and I don't think this is healthy. And the concern is the prediction that the number of students in the class is going to increase next year and the year after, and I can't imagine how a class of more than 24 is going to work out. So I'm also requesting consideration of increasing one more class. Driscoll has the capacity, is designed for four class, and it would be beneficial to students to benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Next, we have presentation of the Brookline Music School's Recital Hall proposal. Who's doing that, Betsy?
Mr. Tierney, if you can hear us, we're ready for your presentation. Very good.
Do you have the slideshow handy?
Yes. Do we need to prep the presentation to just advise on how finance and capital already reviewed that and what our vote was?
You can, but maybe wait for him to go through his presentation.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and thank you for considering this proposal. As many of you know, the music school has been a longtime tenant in Canard House, and although we're starting our 101st year as an organization, we are in the middle of our third lease with the town and the school for the building. And we are seeking your permission to expand and renovate our current recital hall. Currently, that recital hall is a double parlor on the Canard roadside of the building, about 1,000 square feet with a limited performance and seating area. What we'd like to do is expand the recital hall out over the porch to add additional audience seating space and reorient the performance space. A renovated hall will have a flat floor, which will allow for maximum flexibility of use. The school's standard setup for performance will move the performance area from the center of the east wall, to the center of the east wall along Canard Road, meaning that every audience member would be no further than three rows away from the performers. The current hall is accessible, fully accessible, and the renovated hall will remain so. However, currently, navigation of the space in that hall is very, very difficult. People with limited abilities, and when you see the picture that we've presented, you see that it'll be dramatically improved with this renovation. Next slide, please. Our goals with doing this are to be able to increase the frequency and elevate the quality of students' experiences when they perform. We double our audience's capacity in a warm, welcoming space, a prosperous community. Currently, parents often have to wait in the lobby until their kid performs and they cycle in and out of the hall to hear their students play. In developing this space, we can host larger audiences and use the room more effectively for ensembles, concerts, recitals, and rehearsals. It'll also be the really only dedicated performance space of this size in Brookline for people to enjoy and to use, which we hope will happen. The large space will also support better summer programs, experiences for chamber music, flute institute, jazz lab programs that we work very closely with Kenny Cozal and the Public Schools of Brookline on to make available to students who otherwise don't get access to summer programs. And the expanded space would continue to be used, hopefully by Lincoln School for their conservatory program, and may be available if other schools can come down as well to use. The more it's used during the school day when music school is not fully in capacity would be great. Next slide. And this is what we'd end up with. We'd have an acoustically appropriate performance space that will elevate the students' experience. I should say, all performers' experiences. We would have increased seating capacity up to 120, although typically it would be set up for about 75 to 90. The expansion with upgraded furnishing and lighting does create a much larger space for all of our ensembles of various kinds and music theater program. The total cost of the expansion, the construction itself, is about $800,000 and would, of course, be the complete responsibility of the music school. Next. We are just completing, sorry, we completed the feasibility study and determined that there was enthusiasm for the project, both in terms of program goals and a clear path to us being able to raise the money to pay for it. The Preservation Commission has already given advisory meeting on this project, and they were very much in support of our design and encourage us to move forward. We are currently soliciting major gifts in a quiet way with the goal of trying to hit $600,000 in costs by the end of the year, and we hope to be able to go public if this project is approved by you in January. And our goal would be to put a shovel, so to speak, in the ground after school gets out in June. It's about a three- to four-month project, and we would expect that all of the major construction that would impact the school, Lincoln School, the neighbors, would be done in the summer, and by the time schools resume in September, we would just be doing the finished work on the inside. Next slide. These are the key people who are working on this, that obviously the Brookline Music School's Board of Trustees. Me as the Executive Director. Vicky Lau, who's our Director of Finance. Valerie Curd, who's doing marketing. And Jen Hickamotham is our Development Consultant, who's someone who worked with me at the River School for 26 years. She's been there, had been there for 28. This is currently what the Canard side of, Canard roadside of Canard House looks like from the street. And then our next slide shows the architect's rendering of what the building would look like from the Lincoln School playground viewpoint with this enclosed recital hall that you can see on the right side of the building. The next slide shows that same view, but from the road, and you can see what an enclosed porch with glass windows would look like. The next slide shows what that would look like at night, so we're not seeing it as being something that would be very intrusive into the neighborhood in terms of lighting. And then the next slide shows a full-on side view of what that project would be, would look like when it was completed. And then the last slide is the best one. It shows the interior of that room, how we'd have it set up, and those five windows on the left side face Canard Road. So that's the scope of the project, why we want to do it, how we'd go about it, and I'm here to ask for your approval for us to be able to move forward.
Thank you. Mariah, could you just give the summary now of the Finance Committee before we open it for questions?
Sure. The committee was very supportive and voted unanimously to recommend this project to the full committee.
Thank you. Any questions of the committee? Okay. I'm going to ask a dumb one. This is our building? What?
Yes.
This is our building?
This building is on the Lincoln property. It's on Canard Road. And in 20, now you're going to catch me, I want to say it was 2016, 15, the school committee signed a, 2018? It was around 10 years ago, the school committee signed a 20-year lease with the Brookline Music School, a renewal lease with the Brookline Music School. So that is the, that is why we are discussing this, and that's why school committee needs to approve it, because we're the user agency.
Okay. Is there a motion? Suzanne, you look like you...
Sure, I'll move to approve this renovation.
And I'll second it.
And seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion? Okay, Suzanne, how do you vote?
I just want to say that I love the Brookline Music School, and they do wonderful work. And my own children went there many, many years ago, and there was a very small room that we had to go in, and this would be a big improvement. So I vote yes.
Excellent. Sarah?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes, and I think it looks beautiful.
Bob?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes, and just, I wanted to add one thing I forgot that the committee was really happy about earlier, too, was the, what David alluded to of the collaboration with Kenny and the ability to use this expanded space as well for the district. So it's really a win-win.
And I vote yes for lots of reasons. It's beautiful, and I think it's going to be a great concert space and also for the partnership with PSB and the summer programs in particular. Thank you for that partnership. So that is unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it very much.
Next on our agenda is the competency determination policy, which is a new policy. First reading, this is the update to the high school graduation requirements. And is that you, Bella, or is that Robin?
We have, we have Robin, but no, our Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, but also President, I don't know if you're coming up, too, is Anthony Meyer, our Head of School at the high school, and we have Hal Mason as well, Assistant to the Head of School. I know, she's like, "Do you want them up there?" Yeah. Or are there, okay. And while, while Robin is setting up, and I think, I don't know if you have something for the screen, I wanted to preface this. So we've known for some time that we had a requirement by the state to submit, and school committee approved competency determination for our students, and we knew for some time that we had a deadline for submission of 12/31/2025. We did not anticipate that this Monday, a couple of days ago, that the governor would be releasing her recommendations for a graduation requirement, and that did confuse us a bit, and actually, I would say, not everyone anticipated that timing. So I did write, "M.A.S.S., are we still supposed to be doing this?" And the answer is yes. So the governor did put out recommendation, and it was through the, sorry, I thought I'd had the, there was a graduation requirement council that was set up with representatives from different school districts, including union leadership, to talk about graduation requirements in the aftermath of, was it question number two last year, that eliminated the MCAS as a graduation requirement, or the passing of the MCAS as a graduation requirement. So this recommendation came out on Monday, but there was a webinar offered by the Secretary of Education, Pat Totwiler, and joint with Pedro Martinez, who is our Commissioner of Education on Wednesday. Today's Thursday, so that was yesterday. And the recommendation has seven parts, and they are taking feedback right now, or public input, and they are going to take that input, and there will be a full report coming out in June 2026. June twenty twenty-six. If the recommendations in whatever form, if they were to be adopted, well, they believe will require legislature approval. So yes, we still have to submit our competency determination by the end of this twenty twenty-five calendar year. And then we have these other recommendations to look to. So I, I would invite school committee, we should send you the link so you can look at it. There is seeking input and also I think anyone that will, that at the high school should also look at and seek input. There are, again, there are seven components to it and there is some concern about how they would be managed in our schools. But yes, we have to do that. So this is, this is all good. So we have Robin, who's going to present, and we have Anthony and Hal, who are supporting that presentation. This is the first reading.
Okay, so is this, can you hear me? Is this off? Yes, that'd be great. So as Superintendent Wong shared, last November, so just over a year ago, on, in November, ballot question two eliminated MCAS as the measure for competency determination. So this is what replaces our local, our new policy is what replaces that. So what it charged each district with is now that MCAS is no longer the measure, we had to submit our own measure based on the frameworks. Because what the competency determination was based on is really two parts of the graduation. So there are the local graduation requirements, which are more, far more expansive. They cover the four-year experience of students. They call, cover the four, the full measure of their experience at the high school level. And then the competency determination is really about ensuring that students have met the basic standards for the curriculum frameworks in ELA, math, science, and now in, with history. So that's just kind of how they work together. They've always, their local graduation requirements and the competency determination have always been part of the graduation requirement since that's been put into place, but the measure used to be MCAS. So this is our replacement. So what you have before you is, we are really following this, the guideline. And one of the challenges that we had as we went through this, because we needed to specify which courses would demonstrate, and really it's the equivalent of two years of English, so ninth and tenth grade English. One of the places where we ran into in our first discussions of this is that we have a number of courses for ninth grade English and tenth grade English in a number of our programs, and we wanted to make sure we captured that. It was really hard to capture within the policy itself. And so we wanted to make sure that we could get all of that in and that as those courses change, if titles change or new courses are brought online, really all of our courses are aligned to the frameworks. And so what we decided in the policy itself was to point to the course of study, right? And we did note within our course of study, the courses that would, would align with the, the measure of competency for English, math, and science. And so, and math, the one thing that it's really just Algebra I and geometry. For students in Brookline, most of our students will take Algebra I in eighth grade. That's not always the case if a student comes new to us or whatever their trajectory is, but most students will meet that first part of that in eighth grade. And we're allowed to do that under the guidelines from DESI because that is a common practice for Algebra I to be offered as an eighth grade course, as long as it aligns to the high school framework, which ours does. So that's in there as well. Part of the policy also is that we had to account for ensuring that we had opportunity for late arriving students. So students who come to our district, and if they're coming from another Massachusetts district, we're all in the same boat. They've generally met, if they've met the competency determination in their ascending district and they come to Brookline High School, then we accept that. If they're coming from out of state, let's say, or out of the country and they're new to Brookline High School, we need to do a more thorough transcript review and potentially lay a path for them to meet that through their coursework. And that's generally can be accomplished. The other thing that we had to outline in the policy was thinking about the process for appeals. So we've done that within it. I think there's greater clarity around it. And also there is allowance for students graduating two thousand and three to present if they want to make an appeal. If MCAS was the, if the competency determination prevented them from graduating in the past as, with MCAS as the measure, if they wanted to have their transcript reviewed, there, we needed to make allowance for that within the policy. So you'll see that outlined at the bottom there, what that looks like. Are there any specific questions? Questions? Carolyn?
Thanks, Val. And thanks, Robin. So, and forgive me because I did look at this before. So the competen, how is the competency, how are the competency requirements? Are they not sort of the, a foundation of the, our graduation requirements? Okay. Because the wording says in addition to, but it's sort of the other way around.
Well, they're, yeah, they're, and they're folded within.
Yeah, yeah. So the competency and then we have ours. And then in terms of the appeal, that's interesting. So I'm just curious and if you can just explain it again. So if somebody didn't graduate, but would that, but, so that would be one piece of an appeal?
Yeah.
But you would also still have had to do the, okay.
Yeah, everything else that we would set forth is our local.
But in fairness, it's just.
If that was the holdup, then they're, they can make an appeal and it would be.
Understood.
Didn't achieve competency determination solely based on MCAS?
Yep.
That person could then appeal to us.
Yeah.
Have us look at the transcript and view that they had met these criteria rather than the criteria of MCAS and therefore we would retroactively issue a diploma to them.
As long as they also did the other requirements, the graduation requirements.
Correct. Right, they had met all the graduation.
Interesting. Cool. Okay. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Suzanne?
So I'm a little confused. It's not because of you, it's because of what the state's doing. So this is good forever, for this year? Because we don't know, is that?
We don't know.
We don't know. So we have to vote on.
Until further notice, right.
Till further notice. So we have to vote on something. This is the first reading, so we'll probably do it at the next meeting for the second reading. And that's, that's the document you will send in to DESI?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And is it this whole document? Because it, it looks like it, oh, I see. So we've got the I one F, we have the J one G.
So I think one of them is the graduation requirements, which our graduation requirements haven't changed. I think the only addition in that policy is the points to the competency determina, like our, our guidance for competency determination.
Okay.
Andy and then Sarah.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say that I think you found it.
Hold on, hold on, Andy, hold on. Anthony had more to say on that.
Sorry, Andy. I just wanted to add, Suzanne, so it's at least a year and it's unclear. As Superintendent Wong stated, we have the beginnings of new guidance from the governor and from DESI, and it's unclear what the rollout will be or the timing, the impacts, the support for that work. So Robin is right, it's a year and it could be more than that and it's a little uncertain. And just to be transparent, I've queued up an email since Superintendent Wong said, let's share that slide deck with you. So as we finish today, I'll send that to you and it's interesting and we'll see where it goes with the state.
And on the timing, I'll also say, from a legislative perspective, Anthony, following up on what you said, given that the report isn't coming out until June of twenty-six, which is when the legislative session ends, save for any budget holdover, they don't come back to session until January of twenty-seven at that point. So we're a little ways away before anything else.
So is it going to be a pilot program with her suggestions?
No, no.
No.
She just wants feedback, what people think about.
They, they just released it on Monday and again, it has seven parts. There's end of course assessment, there's portfolio, there's required MYCAP, there's, there's just these different, so I actually think it's going to invite a lot of comment around the different parts and, right. So once we, once I heard that they're doing a full report in June, then we knew, we knew it's going to be sometime before the other, the other one gets implemented, if it does. Thank you. And the slide deck that Anthony Meyer referred to is from the webinar that was done yesterday. Yeah.
Andy?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say, I thought this was a neat way of resolving an issue that came up in subcommittee, which was whether this belongs in the policy manual at all. Because we are required to like list the courses that are, that would fulfill the requirements, but that would have led to an extremely sort of in the weeds policy. Also, there are complications, right? Because we have some special programs at the high school whose courses don't necessarily slot very neatly into, into this sort of document. Anyway, so I like how it's ended up where it's just referred to the course catalog where there will be a special marking indicating, that star there, thanks, Betsy, that indicates what exactly the courses are that sort of satisfy these underlying principles in the policy.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Bob?
You guys have any? Yeah. So I read the article in the Globe that Superintendent Wong referred to and I had a pretty strong reaction to it. And I felt like, okay, MCAS isn't a graduation requirement anymore, so the State Department of Education has to do some gyrations and say, how are we going to, how are we going to assess that students are actually worthy of graduation now that we don't have that one test that supposedly, you know, told us who should be graduating from high school? So one of my reactions is that the context for, you know, the, the thinking about how do we make sure that our students are learning well and achieving at high levels and graduating from high school, ready to go on to the next level, whether it's work or the military or college, two-year college, whatever. So I just want to say that in the high school, for example, you spend four years, one hundred and eighty, eighty days a year with graduation requirements that are developed by the teachers and school leaders. And the most important, by far the most important indication to me of achievement and performance is the student's transcript. You know, they take a whole bunch of courses, they take all the courses that are embedded in the graduation requirements. Colleges most value the transcript. And so, you know, I always, I say, okay, the most important thing we have to do, working with teachers and leaders at the schools, is design courses in a dynamic way. You know, every year you come before the school committee with additions and deletions and changes in the course catalog, reflecting a dynamic process of assessing, you know, what we should be offering to our students. So at the end of the four years, they'll be ready to move on. And so I, I feel that we lose sight of the fact that that's what is the most, by far, most important thing that we're doing to make sure that our students are achieving at high levels. And so the seven, you know, portfolios and project-based stuff, it's, that's fine, but I have, you know, serious questions about the time and the complication of, you know, working on an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS. I think, you know, isn't there anything better that people can be doing with their lives than, than, you know, trying to replace the high-stakes MCAS? So I was upset when I read that. And I trust, I trust the teachers and school leaders to develop a program in Brookline Public Schools that's going to serve all the students well. And that's the most important thing to me that'll allow us to assess the achievement and performance of every kid in our school system. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Sarah?
I was wondering if, in going through this process, did you find any programmatic implications to putting this together? Do you think that anything will change because of the work that you've put into this document?
The only thing that might change, the thing that will change will be the review of new students who come in, especially the many foreign students who come in. So we'll have to develop some procedures for a thorough transcript review. In the past, it would have just been, they would have come and sat with me to take MCAS in November and they would have, you know, come in from Tokyo, come in from Sweden, come in from wherever, and they'd sit and take those exams and we'd get the scores back several months later and they'd be cleared to go. So now it's going to be, we need to look at what you took when you were in these international schools, how that aligns with frameworks, how that aligns with the courses that we're offering, and then what courses and what course of study we would recommend for kids. So that'll be the real change, I think, for that population of kids who enter the school, especially entering the school as twelfth graders.
And the only change, you think?
For the most part, yeah. I mean, all of our kids are already taking, a kid who's, who was ready for the MCAS would have taken, you know, to the ninth grade, tenth grade English, they would have taken Algebra I and Geometry, they would have taken any of the, of the lab sciences, and they certainly would have been taking U.S. History already.
Great, thank you.
Maybe I would just add, I agree with Hal, that just it's procedures and what are the safety nets we have where we're scouring for kids who might not be meeting competency when the measure was simple, passing the MCAS, that's one thing. But now I think we need to be more dynamic around those procedures, thus the work with Mindy Paolo of EL, with our guidance coordinator, with Robin Fabiano of Special Education, certainly with Robin and with Hal. And we also announced to our administrative council what we were doing today, just so people know the direction we're moving and the impacts on the work that we will need to do.
Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll see you back here December eighteenth. I think, no more questions, Ron? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I could, just to thank, to again thank Robin and Hal and Anthony because we have a new commissioner and with the new commissioner, there has been sort of these new reporting requirements or policies and, and that have come our way. And actually that has been a, a concern among the districts and, and superintendents have given that feedback to the commissioner. So, so we knew we had to do this, but I mean, just think about the, the work that, that it entailed and then making sure, jumping into the policy subcommittee and making sure that you have the two readings and now there's this other set of recommendations that are out there. There will be actually more reports that will come your way that are part of this new administration that have trickled down. So, but I just want to, they, they took on their task with positively and with it, with seriousness and so I appreciate. It wasn't something people thought they were going to have to do and they did it and they're completing it, I think, done well and on time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Karen Schmuckler's team floating into the building. So Karen, you're up next for Student Services.
So the next presentation will be led by Deputy Superintendent Karen Schmuckler of Office of Student Services. And I think she has, she has Robin Fabiano, who's over here, and I see Matt Dubois and I see Tricia Lahang and we also, I think we still have. Huh? And Nadine Muller, yes, thank you. And, and we may, we, we have our other administrators here. So in my practice, I have always, I have pressed upon the person who is in Karen's position to do an annual presentation, usually in the fall, on Student Services. So many of our students are receiving services and what we offer is just so comprehensive and also so many layers. It's a big part of our programming, it's a big part of our budget. And so I always think it deserves a time when the members of the committee can focus and be able to answer questions on this because it's, it's a big part of our programming, a big part of our budget. And I know also as we anticipate a possible override, their, the Revenue and Expenditures Study Committee have a lot of questions on, on this area of our programming. And so we have said if they would wait for this presentation, and there might be questions that come after, but we thought this was a more comprehensive, big-picture way to present a really important part of, of what we offer here in Brookline. So thank you.
Well, good evening. Really happy to be here and thank you, Superintendent Wong, in agreement in terms of being able to provide a fairly broad overview tonight. If you've had a chance to look at it, there's a lot of information. I also really appreciate being joined by my amazing, wonderful colleagues tonight who are going to join me in presenting in terms of the work on the ground and the day-to-day work is really done by. work is really done by them in terms of making sure that we provide robust continuum of services and supports and instruction across the board. So this is what we're going to do tonight, do a little bit of who's who in the Office of Student Services, many of whom are here at the leadership level, but also who's who in terms of our educators and our faculty and our staff. We'll look at Clinical Services, Social Emotional Learning, Health Services, 504s, and then we'll dive a little bit more deeper into Special Education with some data, both a little bit you saw when we presented on disproportionality. We'll look at some district data, some Special Education eligibility, what does that look like? I think there are a lot of misbeliefs around how students become eligible and what are the criteria for eligibility, so we're going to talk a little bit about that. What's the difference between an IEP and a 504? And then we'll look at a little bit of out-of-district data. So as I said, those are the components that fall under Student Services and Health Services. And so that's what the org chart looks like in terms of myself. We have amazing support, administrative support and clerical support in the Office of Student Services, and we would not be able to do what we do without them. And then the team of directors, as I said, are just critical to the day-to-day work that goes on, and you're going to hear from them directly. So it's myself, Matt, Trish's coordinator of School Health Services, Nadine, Anna and Becky, who are the Directors of Special Education, pre-K through eight, Robin, who's Director of Secondary Special Education, Lilia Flaherty, who's the new Director of Winthrop House, and as you know, we now have Winthrop House, sixth through 12th grade, and then Tracy Paradise, who is in her third week as the new out-of-district coordinator, although she's been in the district for many, many years as the teacher leader for professional development here many, many years ago, and more recently as a BCBA at the Runcle School. And so in terms of our educators, faculty and staff, at the pre-K eight and nine through 12 level, you have the directors, you have, we have a team facilitator in every building, we have two at Ridley, two at BEEP, and three at the high school, teachers, all of our related service personnel, and all of our paraprofessionals. And again, all of these people are critical to the day-to-day work. Broader, as you think about Student Services, are our nurses, psychologists, counselors, our social workers and our adjustment counselors. And I'm going to hand over to Matt, who's going to talk more fully about Clinical Services.
All right, I could, I could talk about my group for a while, but I'll be, I'll be brief. So we just want to talk a little bit about the folks in our buildings who are, who are doing our clinical work. So you're going to hear about three separate roles. So our school counselors, our school adjustment counselors, and our school social workers, I know that's confusing, we use those terms interchangeably based on a person's training, and then our, our school psychologists. And what I want to offer is though, as though there is some overlap in skillset, those three roles are very distinct. Each of those are really, really critical in terms of our SCL and mental health programming. You'll sort of see how we divide and conquer the work. And so as you probably appreciate, we have a couple of school counselors, meet through our buildings, and typically, those are based on grade bands. So for example, in our elementary schools, typically it's K to 2, 3 through 5, and then middle school, 6 through 8. And they are supporting all the students in those grade bands. And oftentimes, and it's, it's a pretty neat experience, it's typically the school counselor that's the very first point of contact for families, for teachers, whenever there's a concern, when families are enrolled in the district, typically it's the school counselor that they're first meeting with. And what you've heard me talk about is, is how important our prevention-based work has been. It's really our school counselors that are leading a lot of that work. And so they are in classrooms all the time, doing whole-class lessons that are focused on a whole host of, of social and emotional skills. As you see there, they will also do a lot of small-group work. Oftentimes, we may call them lunch bunches, a lot of focused work that are on things like social skills, on, on belonging, things to help kids access instruction. They are also our 504 coordinators in the building. So they are leading 504 meetings, they're drafting 504 plans, and they're making sure that they're implemented with fidelity. There are times in which our school counselors will also do individualized work, sometimes at short-term, sometimes as part of a student's IEP, but we really try to focus their work on Tier One and Tier Two. In contrast, our school social workers or our school adjustment counselors are really focused on working with the students in our buildings who have the highest level of social and emotional need. And so there's a lot that, that comes with that work. So there's direct-service minutes, right, so the, where they're working with students for individual counseling, but then there's a lot of indirect-service minutes. So typically, they are consulting with that student's entire team, they're meeting with parents, they're meeting with families, they're talking with outside providers, and really ensuring wraparound care for, for students. Oftentimes, the students will have needs outside of scheduled counseling sessions, so there's a lot of crisis support that will come with that as well. Most of our social workers and adjustment counselors will also do group work with students on things like anxiety management or emotional regulation, and again, really supporting the students in our buildings with the highest level of social and emotional need. And I'd say a lot of this is driven by IEP services. And then finally, our school psychologists, I'm trained as a school psychologist, Nadine is trained as a school psychologist, so it's a, a group that is dear to our hearts. And when we think about our school psychologists, sometimes we'll think only about the evaluations that they are conducting, and those are essential, they are really, really important, but they have a ton of skills just beyond that work. And they are really, really important clinical providers in our buildings as well. And so our school psychologists do have a clinical caseload typically around IEP services for counseling and consultation. What you've seen on each of these three roles as well is that when a student is in crisis, all of these folks are available to support in that moment. And then what you've also probably noticed is that we recognize that we only get to hang out with kids about 30 minutes a week, maybe an hour a week. Other adults are, are with students a lot more. And so our team is focused on doing a lot of professional development, a lot of training, a lot of coaching with teams, so that everybody's in a supportive stance to support kids. Before I turn it over to, I think Tricia is, is next, I want to sneak in an attendance update here. Last month, when I presented, you may remember, I talked about our attendant, our chronic absenteeism rate from last year was 10.8%. Now that we're about a quarter through the, the school year, I still wanted to provide a year-to-year comparison. So around this time last year, we were at 8.8%. This is pretty typical, because we were just about to get into cold and flu season. Holidays will also impact attendance, but year-to-year, we are down 1.5%, which is, which is positive. This is the inverse, so this is actually looking at attendance rates. So this is our attendance rate, so it's a percentage of school days in which kids are attending. So our attendance rate this year, as compared to the two previous years, was stronger. So we're off to a good start in that space. All right. Tricia, talk about our awesome school nurses.
Thank you. We do have awesome school nurses, so thank you for that, Matt. I listed here really just a lot of the things that nurses do. You probably know many of them. The medical record is a key part of what we do. We have electronic health record system, SNAP it's called, it's the gold standard of health record systems. We document every health visit, so we have pretty good stats on the students who come to see us. We do a lot of screening, all the mandated screenings, administer medications as needed, we collaborate with staff, multi, multidisciplinary collaboration, and the most important thing that we are doing is taking care of the student who is in front of us. We have seen, I think, 19,000 students this year, and 96% of those students have gone back to class. So studies do show that schools who have a full-time nurse have way more students going back to class and not going home. So I think our numbers reflect that. The nurses, many of our nurses are CPR instructors as well, so we have been training staff in the district. A couple of weeks ago, we trained about 32 or so staff. We will be offering another session in the spring. We're likely going to be certifying, oh, I should be advancing it. We'll be certifying the admin team at the high school in the, probably in the next month or so. What else can I tell you? We're doing hearing and vision screenings, over 6,400 of our screenings are done already this year. We've done more screenings than I have listed here, but just kind of an indication of how busy we are and how appreciative we are that we have a nice amount of nurses in our district to, to take care of the students.
That number of zeros is correct, Trish, 19,000, not 19, not 1,900, right?
19,000.
Wow.
That's medicate, that's not counting the screenings, that's daily visits.
Well, we're only in three months, though. Wait, that's this year, not last year? Wow.
Thus far this year, yeah.
Holy moly, impressive, thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
So I hope from both Matt and Trish, it really gives us a sense of the kind of roll-up-sleeves day-to-day work that all of our folks are doing with students on a daily basis in general ed and special ed. And so one of the things, as we kind of move a little bit more into thinking about students with disabilities, students with disabilities fall under two categories, and we are, and we serve students under both IDEA, which you heard a lot about a couple of weeks ago, and then also students on 504, fall under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. And then we are also guided by Massachusetts General Law, which are the mass regulations for special ed. And those are the federal and state statutes and regulations that we provide services and supports. As you know, special education, the IDEA, is a funding statute, and it really focuses on students where there is a disability that has an adverse educational impact. And that's really the, one of the key criteria and differences between students on IEPs and students who may qualify for an IEP, for a 504, in which there may be no educational need specifically, and there may be no direct learning need, but you may still qualify for a 504. And 504, as we know, is a civil rights statute. It's an anti-discrimination and harassment statute on the basis of a disability. It applies to public schools, it also applies to public colleges and, and government spaces as well. So it's a much broader statute. Those are just some of the differences. So in, under IDEA and for our students on IEPs, you need to qualify under one of 13 federal, 10 Massachusetts specific disabilities. 504 is not categorical, right? It's any qualifying physical or mental impairment that has a substantial impact. One of the differences again with, for kids who are in IEPs, is your IEP provides specialized instruction that enables the student to achieve at a level commensurate with their ability. And as I said prior, the IDEA is limited to students with an educational need, whereas 504s are not specifically limited to students with an educational need. And so that's what it sort of looks like visually, right? You have all students within the district, which is really your larger group of students. As we know, all students are general education students first, so that includes students who might be in general education. Then you have students with impairments who are served through general education without any necessary 504 plan or an IEP. You then have a smaller group of students served under Section 504, and then students who qualify under the IDEA. And in terms of thinking about how, I'm going to hand over to Robin, who will start and really think, think about how do we serve our students and what are our services and supports for students who do qualify under the IDEA for an IEP? And Robin will lead us off, but we're going to really go through, really just showing what's available and what's happening at all the different buildings in special ed. I'm going to hand over to Robin.
Hi. So we have two slides that describe the Brookline High School Special Education Programming. The first slide focuses on programs that are probably considered less restrictive than the next slide. And so you'll find that if you look at the left-hand side, we start off with learning centers. Learning centers are academic support classes. I would say the majority of students on IEPs in the high school are assigned to some form of a learning center. And in those programs, students focus on working on executive functioning and academic support skills. Students also have the ability to take CO-TALK classes or small-group classes. Those three, if you look at them in a triangle, many of those students and most of the students on this, on this slide are diploma-bound students, so all students on track to meet a, receive a typical high school diploma. We have CO-TALK classes in all subject areas, and those teachers that teach them are dual-certified in the content area that they teach in, and in special education. And then the small-group classes, which are also available in all content, core content classes, grades nine through 12, are also taught by a dual-certified special education teacher in that specific content area. If you look all the way to the right-hand side, Related Services, those staff provide support in all programs across all settings to all students if, if needed. If you go down, these are some of our specialized programs, and if I remember, I believe we have 10 specialized programs at the high school. And that has provided us the opportunity to bring back many students who have been out of district pre-K to eight previously, and this is a nice transition opportunity for students and families to think about returning back to the high school or turning, returning back to the district. And we look at some of our options to support those students. So the Lab Program is a program that serves students with language-based learning disabilities, students with communication disorders and reading disabilities, and our Home Base Program is specifically a ninth, ninth-grade program. That was actually created when students were at OLS, and that was because some of our other programs that were grades nine through 12 obviously couldn't support the students when they were at a different location. And so they split, and students had a, a ninth-grade program and then transitioned into some of our, our other programs that are, serve students 10 through 12. We've kept that model, probably because the ninth-grade building is the way it functions. But we do also think about some of our ninth-grade students and some of our other programs if, if need be. But Home Base is a program that allows students to have additional transition support as they enter the high school, lots of case management provided by an embedded social worker, and additional liaisoning for academic support. Our Pathways Program is a 10th through 12th program. It's at the 115 Building, serves students who access any type of general education or CO-TALK or small-group class, and also has needs related to autism, and requires a liaison and additional supports in executive functioning and social pragmatics. And our Supported Learning Center is a program also at the 115 Building with an embedded social worker, and that program serves students with some social-emotional needs. Those students also take a variety of general education classes, CO-TALK classes, small-group classes, and then get that embedded support through the special education teacher and social worker. And then on this slide, we have more of our specialized programs. And let's see, the Connections Program is new. We started this two years ago, and we're pretty excited about it. It's served some of our more complex learners really successfully. It's a team-based program where students have a consistent educational experience across all of their core content classes taught by a team of teachers that really coordinate in terms of instruction and strategies and embedded social skills and transition needs. It's, it's a interesting program. I'm inviting people to come, because I'm not doing it justice in terms of how I'm describing it, but it's, it's been really successful for many of our more complex students. it, but it's, it's been really successful for many of our more complex students. Those students are also on track to meet graduation requirements, which is great. Our Excel program is our therapeutic program, serves students nine through 12. They have a different type of schedule than students in the general high school, so their classes rotate on a 10-day cycle. So they take two classes, for example, English and math for, for 10 days, and then end that cycle with a community experience or field trip, and then start a new cycle of social studies and science. And they can accrue credits along the way by each cycle. And so that's really helpful for students who need to recoup some credits or gain credits in a creative way. And that stu, that program has an embedded social worker. It has, it offers all four core content classes plus wellness, plus an advisory within that program, dual-certified teachers. And let's see, one more thing. And that's, that program serves students nine through 12. We coordinate with our ninth-grade building as well to serve those students. Let's see, I'm just trying to go kind of in order. Our transition services, we have two fantastic transition teachers, and they serve students nine through 12. And also in our 18 to 22 program, they provide both consultation to our learning center teachers, they provide direct service, they provide groups for students, they do transition assessments for our students as well. And then we have two programs serving students who are not on track to earn a typical high school diploma. And those are students in our RISE program and our bid, or Bridge program. We have three RISE classes. And this year, one Bridge program, next year, two Bridge programs. And those students, their core academic teacher is a special education teacher focusing on intensive special needs, and they, they provide functional academics. Students also go to any elective classes that they're interested in, advisories as well for inclusion opportunities. And then we have the Winthrop House program at the high school, grades nine through 12. It's at the bottom of our 22 building, and that's our therapeutic public day school. Any questions about any of those programs?
Yes. Robin, when you talk about students are on track to graduate with a diploma, does that include world language and the performing arts and all the, the, all the requirements?
It does. It does. The high school allows a pathway for students who might only take one year of world language and can offset that with a learning center. But other than that, they are expected to take all of the core content and core credit requirements. What's interesting, when I came to the district, I asked about foreign language or world language waivers. And really, Brookline High School, that's not typical practice. We've worked creatively around some students that may need that, but for the most part, students are able to participate in world language with a lot of support from the world language department and in coordination with learning center teachers.
Thank you. Donna has a question, and then Sarah.
Hi. Thank you so much for this fantastic overview, Robin. Can you remind me if any of the specialized programs are open to out-of-district students from other districts? I think there's a potential where, for Winthrop House to accept other students, but are there, are there any other possibilities? And also Val's question just reminded me, there were conversations a couple of years ago, specifically at the high school, where there was some impetus to look at the scheduling of learning center or the use of learning center as one of the two electives for children who require a learning center. So I'm wondering, or is there, has there any, been any discussion about that, or is that something we might be looking at in the future?
Sure. So Winthrop House is, is prepared to, to tuition in students. We have also been approached to tuition in students in Excel, and I'm not, the student wasn't a match, so it didn't go, it didn't go any further than that. And I would say that if a district approached us, we would be interested in hearing what the needs of the students are and looking at our own resources to see if we could make that happen. I believe since last year, I was trying to think about this on the way over, I think so far since I've been here, we have brought back over 13 students to the high school. So every year, we bring back, you know, four or five. This fall, we've brought back two. And so I think the range of programming allows us to do that. And then I think, Donna, you asked about learning centers. So I think that is a concern. Does that, for example, does that take an opportunity for an elective away for a student? And the way that we've been able to course sequence and make choices around the, the selection of courses, most students are able to take the elective that they want and still have a learning center and still have the wellness within the four years. It may not be an exact sequence that they wish it would be, but within four years, we're able to, to do that.
Are there models in other districts? Are there other models that work in other districts that don't impact the students' abilities to take the same number of electives as their peers?
So I would say that every single district has the same situation because this, it fulfills a class, right? It fulfills an entire block. So this is a struggle across all communities that need to support students and provide services within the school day.
Thank you.
Sarah, and then Bob, and then Mariah.
I guess I sort of have to say hello because I don't know how much we've interacted. So first of all, hi. But I'm looking at this picture right here, and I'm seeing that there's 360 students that are in these different programs. And I know that for privacy, you can't tell us, like, you know, about the smaller programs, how many are in them. But just so that I have a feel for it, are all of the ones that are depicted on page 22, more than 10 students in each of these, more than 20? Like, can you give me a, a sort of a scope of, do we have really small programs is what I'm looking at?
So every program on this page has more than 10. And other than Connections, more than 12, more than 15, other than Connections. And Bridge, because students age out when they're 22. And so we start with more students than we end with throughout the year.
That's super helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Bob, and then Mariah.
Thank you.
Actually, because of that, I'm sorry. When, when a district typically determines whether they should create a program, so you want to, you want to know that you have enough students with a certain profile to do that program. But the break even is sometimes as low as four students in a program to break even. Because if you think about what it costs to send students out of district, so I just wanted to note that break even can actually be as few as three, depending. Yeah. So when you have 10 or 12, you're well beyond break even. And if you didn't have the program, then the amount of tuitions that you would have to have.
Yeah. And we, we were able to start the Connections Program without adding additional resources. We used the resources we had and just reassigned people.
Okay. Bob, and then Mariah.
Thank you. I have a comment, and then I have a question, and then I have a comment. My first comment is this portrait of our special services in, in Brookline is so powerful in terms of the comprehensiveness of it. And I'll comment, my comment, my, my question, and then I'll comment again about the ability to provide these kind of incredible services for kids who need them. My question is, as we all know, particularly special education world at the federal level has been impacted by the national administration. Have you been impacted at all by the cuts that have been made or the money that's supposed to be coming to us?
Is this general for Karen? Do you want? No.
No. Okay. So my, my final comment is that I grew up in a time when chapter 766 wasn't yet in a law, and IDA, ID was not yet a law. And I had, I went to school and some, I lived in a neighborhood in New York City where some of my friends' siblings could not go to school because they were disabled. And so chapter 766 in Massachusetts and chapter, and the IDA laws that have been created since that time are beautiful and un-powerful and impressive. The question, the comment is that they are, to some extent, unfunded mandates. And on a yearly basis, when we do budget, we, we, we suffer financially because of the, because of the unfunded mandates that have been created. And I just want to point that out as a public servant, that when we talk about budget, which is coming up tonight and forever, we have to understand that these laws were beautiful and created to serve all children well, and we're doing that. But at some point, the state and the federal government have to, have to provide the funding so that the local communities, you know, aren't in financial distress as a result of this. And I'm not saying that we should not, you know, be providing these services. Absolutely, we have to provide these services morally as well as legally. But I think that we, as a school committee, as public servants, need to be advocates, powerful advocates to provide, to encourage the state and the federal government to provide additional funding so that the communities, the local communities, every local community doesn't, doesn't have the financial stress that we face every year. Thank you.
Thanks. Mariah?
I have some questions.
Mariah, then Suzanne.
But first, I want to just say, Bob, that by that sort of, by calling out special education as something that they need to support, we're implying that like the local community should fund regular, fund general education, but somehow it doesn't have the same obligation. I know that's not what you meant, but I just think that like, to the extent that we think that special education is right alongside general education, we shouldn't say, oh, well, you know, local funds pay for regular, for general education, but this other thing is beyond the pale. And it's not beyond the pale. And yes, we have a flawed system, but we need to recognize the obligation to support the education of all students and hopefully not create systems which we're living with systemic legacy systems, which underfunds and did not even provide that education before. So it's better, but we have an obligation for all students. It doesn't matter where the money comes from. I want to ask a couple of questions specifically. Do you mind going back one slide? That one. Can you explain, Robin, why Supportive Learning Center only starts in grade 10 if the students are coming back after being in out-of-district programming in grade eight?
Sure. So the Supportive Learning Center and Pathways, those two programs, used to be nine through 12 programs. When the construction was being done and the ninth grade was at OLS, there needed to be a similar program where for students in grades nine, because of course, if you were a student in grade nine and needed your support team, you couldn't come back to 115 to get that support. And so the Home Base was created for those students. Typically, after grade nine, students in Home Base transitioned to either Pathways, the Supported Learning Center, or just a typical learning center model. And so we have, we tried, and we're always open to putting a ninth-grade student into a Pathways or Supported Learning Center if needed. However, most of their classes are in the 22 Tapin Building, and so if they needed support, they would have to then move buildings to gain support. And that is really challenging for kiddos to do proactively and independently. So students with more complex profiles in grade nine are assigned to Home Base. And then when they transition to grades 10, they get moved into either a Pathways or Supported Learning Center. That does sometimes cause like transition issues in terms of coming into a whole new team, but then they're stable 10 through 12. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Can you, does the high school not do BCBA services? I was just surprised not to see it in the list at the right.
They do. We actually have two BCBA's. I'm sorry, that's not on the list. We have two BCBA's. They support a variety of students through consultation and direct support. And I would just say, in terms of the psychologist, we worked hard three years ago to assign psychologists to all of our specialized programs. They're, they're consult and direct service providers, and they stay with that team to really understand those student profiles and those family needs and teacher needs and kind of specialize in some of the needs of the students in those programs. So we have four, we have four and a half because we, Winthrop House shares one with the six-through-eight program. So we have four and a half, so half to Winthrop House, and then four other psychologists that are attached to these programs as well.
Thank you. Can you explain, I didn't quite understand why there's these four specialized inclusion programs here, and then if we go to the next slide, like, what is the difference between the programs that are showed as specialized inclusion here versus the ones on the next slide?
So the majority of the students in these programs take general education classes or co-talk classes or small group classes or a variety, like a combination of. The programs here are all embedded special education classes within that program. They also, these students can take, when appropriate, other classes, but for the most part, the model is the students take all of their core academic classes within that program.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
I have a super quick question, Val.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Thanks.
Suzanne.
Oh, sorry. Suzanne, were you? Okay. So thank you all so far for all of this. It's great. In fact, really, really interesting and really helpful, as it, as Karen said in her introduction. So are these programs, sometimes I hear the term substantially separate. Is that?
That would be a good word.
Okay. Thank you.
Good way to describe them. Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I wonder if you could, I, I know this is going to be a big ask, but if you could just briefly, especially for parents and guardians, family members who might be listening, just go through the process a little bit about, here we have 10 choices, and it's the team that comes together, and they look at the students' needs, and there's guardian input, I take it, perhaps student input. Could you just say a word or two about that?
Are you doing this through the? Okay. So we spend a lot of time working with eighth-grade teams to identify student needs and consider which services and if a program is needed through the transition process. So that is, that is both a team-based decision and then working with the high school to make good recommendations so the transition can be supported and seamless. And in my next slide, I say that we welcomed 110 ninth graders successfully this year, so I'm happy about that. For students that may require a specialized program, many times that includes a tour of a proposed program. So the program has to be proposed before we allow parents to come and tour them, so we're not looking at lots of different options. And so whatever is proposed from the IEP team, they come up and, and see. And then if that's agreed upon, we work very hard to allow the students and the family to have transition activities up to the high school. So that may mean more individualized tours, that may need for some of our students in RISE to come up during the extended school year process and start to be familiar with the building before other students are in the building. And so it's a team recommendation. It also then allows for additional opportunities to come and see the programs and spend time in them.
Thank you. Mariah?
Thanks. Sorry, I forgot one of my questions. I, Robin, I think I heard you say earlier that Winthrop, or was it Winthrop House and Excel, or I missed which programs are ready to accept students for tuitioning in? And I thought we had heard something different, that the programs had not been approved for that. And I just wanted to get clarity from you or Karen, if we have any programs at this point that have been approved and are available to tuition students in.
So you don't, we don't need approval from DC. We are currently costing out actually all of our sub-separate programs, even though some of them do not have space currently. But we are working intentionally around Winthrop House 612 and the ALC. And so hopefully, those two programs will come on board. It's actually the school committee that approves it. So we're doing the financial costing out of each program, and then those will come before you, school committee, to approve the rate based on the financial analysis. And that's, we don't need, it doesn't- And that's, we don't need, it doesn't go through DCE for approval. And so that's what we are. But we're also, to your question, Mariah, currently costing out all of the high school programs, just so, as Robin gave an example, we had a request for a student to come to Excel that didn't turn out to be a good fit. But we also want to be ready so that if we do have a request and we have space, we would be able to move forward, and you would already have approved the rates. So that's all in process, and hopefully you will be able to be looking at those in the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot for you, Robin. Do you have more slides?
I just have one more.
Okay, great.
Let other people go. I just wanted to share some highlights. So as I said, we welcomed 110 ninth graders on IEPs this fall. You may have heard that the Unified Basketball Team had a seven to one season, which is great, but I know it's not all about competition. We had 40 student athletes, it's a really big team. I think that between Brookline High School and Newton South, we probably could have split up into four teams and had everyone play really well. And so I think we are going to think about how to do that differently, so everyone gets a lot of playing time. We are starting Unified Bocce, which is an intramural sport, so it's not an MIAA sport, but we have found two other schools that also have Unified Bocce teams. So not only will we be playing with our, within our own school, but we will have tournaments outside of school to do that. Our transition staff has been scheduling visits to a variety of post-secondary settings. We take students on field trips to allow them to experience a day in the life of either local colleges, local community college, and different trade options. We are, this is a preview, the invitation hasn't come out yet. I'm not sure if anyone here last year came, but we offer a piano course for students in RISE and Bridge. We had a beautiful piano concert last year, and we will be doing that again in January. Our learning center teachers this year are working on aligning their curriculum and resources so students have more similar experiences as they move through the grades. And during Professional Development Day, we, as a department, did some work related to supporting students with ADHD, and that was a topic of interest. And again, a broad disability category that many of our students, many of our teachers support. So that was really nice to have a unified experience during PD Day.
Thank you. One more for Robin, Bob?
Have you thought about an interdisciplinary program between, with Bocce and the Italian, teaching Italian?
I haven't, but I did suggest that we take a field trip down to the north end Bocce courts.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's a little chilly. This isn't like the best season to be going to the north end Bocce courts, but I did bring that up.
You know, someone named Fabiano should be interested in that, right?
That could be. I'm going to call my relatives and have us cook dinner at the same time.
All right. Thank you. All right, here. We're back to Karen.
Thank you so much, Robin. And we should be really proud of the just robust continuum of services and supports that we have at Brookline High School. I think a lot of times we talk about, you know, programming and in district and out of district, but I think the most important is that it's actually every student's right to be able to experience the incredible educational resources that we have in Brookline. And that's, it's so critical that we're developing programs and that we're always innovating and making sure that our continuum is very robust and very tight and that we're meeting just the broader spectrum of students' needs across the district. So thank you to Robin and everybody at the high school. And so from our older learners, we're now going to transition into elementary, but we're going to start with our younger learners. And I'm going to hand over to Nadine, who's going to talk you through BEEP.
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say. We're going from, you know, the oldest of our learners to our very youngest, coming to us right before three at some points. I call them the littles. So I'm very happy to oversee BEEP and Driscoll and Pierce and be able to talk about them tonight. So BEEP has 45 students in special education right now. And I also wanted to make sure on the bottom that people know we have other students who do receive services at BEEP that might not be enrolled in our classroom. So it's not like BEEP only has 45 kiddos on IEPs right now. But the amazing thing about BEEP is as people are transitioning out in Bridge, people are transitioning in all the time in BEEP. So we start with smaller numbers. And as the year goes on and kids age in, or we evaluate more kids in, then our classes get bigger and our services, our numbers who need services grow. So BEEP has inclusive classrooms, all-inclusive classrooms, and it also has specialized programs within those inclusive classrooms. So you'll see, like, all BEEP classrooms have kids who are receiving services, anywhere from, you know, just speech, speech and OT, to kids with classroom participation goals who are, you know, they are in our program in order to have services all day long. And then we also have specialized programs for our more complex learners. So our RISE classrooms are partnered with other inclusion classrooms, so our kids, mostly who have an autism profile, are kind of fluidly integrated back and forth with our other classrooms. And our comprehensive classrooms is really our more medically complex or more global learning needs that are stuffed with special educators also. And the related services, it also doesn't say BCBA over here, yikes, but BEEP has social workers and OTs, PTs, speech, doesn't, and hearing and vision and mobility. And it's really grabbing our kiddos at the youngest age and being able to make sure they are getting the foundation of everything they're going to need as they move forward into our elementary programs. In terms of highlights, so for all my schools, I kind of asked them, what are your highlights? So, and not all of them made the list, because we would have been here a while, but they had a lot that they wanted to share. So one of the BEEP program coordinators worked with a cohort of pre-K and K, and actually some first and second grade teachers, to help them get their pre-k to moderate disabilities license. So that means now some of the teachers, gen ed teachers in our elementaries also have their pre-k to moderate disabilities license, which only helps in terms of meeting the needs of all students in inclusion. One of our educational team facilitators and a BEEP social worker run a parent support group for, you know, the intersection of supporting parents with students with disabilities. We have this new RISE classroom model that I mentioned briefly, where the RISE classrooms are partnered with our inclusion classrooms. So there's really like fluid integration all day of kids coming into the RISE classroom and being part of groups, and students from the RISE classroom, you know, going into the classroom. So it's really a back and forth all day in a really seamless way. If anyone wants to come see that, I think it's pretty, it's pretty exciting. BEEP is doing a pilot of the SIT, the Student Intervention Team. So BEEP's always done response to intervention, RTI, but they're really like formalizing it this year so that they're bringing, you know, what they're calling things and how they're doing it in line with how the rest of the district is working on it from K-8 to high school. And then some BEEP BCBA's applied for and were awarded a grant from the BEF to attend the Black Association of Behavior Analyst International Conference. So you'll see a little thread through my highlights of BEF opportunities that a lot of our teachers were able to have access to this year. So that's BEEP. Driscoll is, as you know, one of our K-8 schools. The specialized programs that we have at Driscoll are our lab program, language, and academic home base, and that goes all the way up to the high school, as Robin mentioned. So students with language-based learning disabilities or dyslexia, right now, kids are enrolled from grades three to eight. You know, we can absolutely expand that to grade two or grade one if there are students who need that. But right now, all of our kiddos are in grades three to eight, and students come from around the district who are a match for that program. We also have Winthrop House, grade six to eight now. So that's an amazing program, and that program is integrating itself as appropriate into the mainstream of the middle school and joining Driscoll for all of its arts, equinoxes, and science, solstice days, and the other sort of Driscoll traditions and other activities that go on over there. The learning centers are, you know, grades K-5, 6, 8. And that's, those are the more generalized learning center models for kids with, you know, academic and social, emotional, and executive functioning needs. And on the next slide, oh, it's over here, but I'll go back. One of the highlights that is going on in our learning centers at Driscoll is that the four, four or five special educator has gotten together with a rotation of service providers to hold a daily student skills group. So some of these kiddos, this is on their IP grid, and some, it's not. But it meets every day, and it's to look at social skills, executive functioning, emotional regulation. So the kids come in in the morning and do this every day, and it's a great like grounding and kind of home base and start for them as they go about their day. Also, we have some middle school special educators doing professional learning about trauma-sensitive classrooms. And again, BCBA's applying for and receiving a BEF grant, and they went to Lisbon, Portugal to attend the Association for Applied Behavior Analysis International. So what they're doing is they're incorporating what they've learned into students' behavior plans, and they're also going to be sharing out with the BCA department. And then to return to Pierce, Pierce does not have any specialized programs, so that does not diminish how amazing they are. They have learning centers from grades K to five, and as you know, the building is split. So 6, 8 is now in, at Fisher Hill. And they have really taken the opportunity over there to enhance that middle school schedule so that the special educators can be in the classrooms as much as possible. So they've divided their caseload and scheduled students in a way that there's kind of, you know, the beginnings of formal co-teaching, but definitely support and inclusion for our middle school students over there so that they're in a lot more than they're out. And then also, at all levels, the OTs and the speech paths have been co-treating students, which means that they're picking an activity, it's cooking, it's a craft, it's Reader's Theater, which was another, you know, BEF grant, and they're working together on the goals in students' IEPs by, you know, kind of putting their skills together to more globally support the students. And some Pierce teachers are part of the Wilson Institute training that's going on. Those are my three schools. Any questions?
Sure.
I'd love to hear a little bit more about the balance between life skills and academics when they're so young. How, I have a second question too, but first of all, how do you make that decision about which to prioritize and when?
For, are you talking for?
For the youngest learners, BEEP to second grade.
So life skills versus?
Academics.
It's, so you have to, when they're that little, you have to learn to learn, right? And so you have to, the first thing you have to do is be able to communicate, and you have to be able to interact and have social, you know, have social skills, be able to follow a group plan, be able to regulate your attention and your executive functioning just enough that you're getting what the teacher is trying to get across. So you really have to lay those foundational skills. BEEP is definitely doing, you know, like Dibbles and Hegarty and really making sure that that instruction is there. And at the same time, they're making sure that kids are developing the student skills. So you'll see a lot of classroom participation goals in BEEP, which is really about how to follow the group plan, how to share, how to interact, how to, you know, how to sit at the activity long enough that you're going to grasp how you're tracing your letters. So they're kind of.
So exciting, yeah. Love that. And then, my other question was, as you were talking, I was getting the sense that there are some students with significant disabilities that we don't have in RISE and ALC. And so the general ed teachers are able to, like, we make sure that our general ed teachers have the training that they need in order, that's what you were saying? Okay.
That we're, you know, across pre-k to, you know, high school, we're really working that we have the capacity to meet the needs of all learners, and they don't have to have a specialized program necessarily to address that. We're like, you know, by using the skills, we're building flexible scheduling, you know, increasing support around inclusion, we're really trying to wrap around all of them. But you're right, sometimes there isn't a specialized program that that student would be part of, but they're still, you know, they're still able to have the integrated support.
Which is really nice for families that might have an older kid at that school or another kid at that school. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Thanks. Thanks for this. I have a few, but some are super easy. What is BCBA?
Okay, Board Certified Behavior Analyst.
Oh, okay.
Excellent question.
Thank you. Would you mind going back to your BEEP slide? This is also going to be an easy one, but it's just a technical one that, so in the bottom left, can you just explain, 34 students who are not yet enrolled in school or attend private, is that like kids who are getting EI come into our classrooms?
So after EI, you become eligible for special education. So when we say that, we have some kids that are part of our BEEP classrooms all day.
Yeah.
We also offer services for students on IP, you know, by appointment, right? And those are what we call our services-only students.
Oh, okay.
So speech, OT, maybe PT, you know, kind of things that they're coming in once or twice a week in a small group, learning, and then going back to either their private pre-k, or some kids, their parents haven't put them in school yet, but they are coming to get services from us.
And so, and I hate to ask this, but it's, or do they pay like a tuition or a fee, or that's?
Nope, special ed, they don't pay for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the lab program.
Mm-hmm.
And this may be a separate conversation, so, and I don't want to take a ton of time. So I hear such great things about it in my experience, like, I've had numerous parent friends who really wanted their kids to get in, some did, some didn't. So it strikes me anecdotally that it's really popular, and they do a great job. So is there ever any conversation, I might have asked you this before, Karen, like, for having that also in other schools? Or kind of like, why only at Driscoll? So that then kids have to go, like, from a neighborhood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every school should be able to address reading disabilities, dyslexia, with, you know, teachers that are able to provide that intensity. It's really our kiddos that need even more than that, right?
Right.
Because lab is, you know, they're out of the classroom for a good two, two and a half hours a day.
Yeah.
Right, so it's kind of like with all of our district-wide programs, there are needs sometimes that are even more intense than the general learning centers, and that's sort of what that program is aiming for.
Yes.
But, I don't know, did you ever talk about that?
Yeah. I guess I'm at, it's like, sort of, I think we used to have one RISE location, and it's expanded, and that's fantastic. So, oh, okay. Oh, and this is another sort of technical. Can you talk for like one minute about trauma-sensitive classrooms?
So that's a, that's a great question, and I know, I'm sure Matt talked about this too. Trauma-sensitive classrooms are really setting up, and you can help me if I misspeak, but setting up the classroom environment in a way that students who may have been exposed to trauma are still able to access, right? So it's predictability, it's routines, it's the way the communication is set up, it's no surprises, you know, it's break spaces for kiddos if they need to re-regulate. So being able to incorporate all of those supportive techniques into teaching and meet kids where they're at is sort of how I would explain that. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Are you?
I don't have any more.
You have no?
I don't know if Karen's going to speak for my colleagues. Okay.
So, thank you, Nadine. And I do want to say, we have, our BCBA's are critical and integral to all our work, and we have BCBA's in all of our buildings, and in many of our buildings, more than one. So I just wanted to highlight that since they are not under the related services, and they very much should be.
I'm sorry, and I just want to know, do they work only with the special education population?
No, they can't. They serve students in general ed and special ed. And we're very fortunate to have, to have the number of BCBA's that we do across the district in terms of supporting kids' social, emotional, and behavioral well-being. And as you can see, they're a very dynamic group and really have skills that are broad and diverse, and they're always doing professional development and improving on those. So we're very, very fortunate. So I'm going to speak to the programs that Becky McCabe and Anna Baumtig oversee. Both of them had prior commitments tonight, and so weren't able to be with us. And so I'm going to start with Runcle. So similar to the other programs, Runcle has learning centers, grades K through five, and as many of you know, has the Runcle has learning centers, grades K through five, and as many of you know, has the RISE program. Last year, we added a classroom to the RISE program at Runcle. And we also added a classroom to the program at Haze. And then they have the full, all of the related services that they have at the other schools. They also, we do music therapy. So that's an additional service that is programmatic in both the RISE programs and the ALC program. And as you can see, Runcle has one of our highest percentages of students on IEPs in the school at 24.1%. A lot of that is because of the specialized program. So our RISE program is a fairly large program at Runcle. And then similarly, similarly at Haze, we have three classrooms. There were two last year. We added a third this year. And so that program is growing. Some of the, and again, I wasn't here when Haze was added, was also around having a north and south program in terms of, we had growing demand and also wanted to make sure that it was geographically spread out. So it's a good question in terms of thinking about as we, if our programs exceed the need and the demand, to really think about what makes sense in terms of our larger, our larger programs. And you'll see when you look at the data on rates around disability, students with autism are our highest rates and students with specific learning disabilities are our highest rates. And so really, we're always paying attention to where are their needs? Where is demand exceeding need in terms of looking at programming sort of year after year? And so again, so Haze again has all the full learning centers, related services, and then our RISE programming. And then Lincoln has our Adaptive Learning Center. Again, as I said, we added a classroom there. And this is one of the programs where we're looking at tuitioning in. It's also a highly specialized program, really serving kids with diverse developmental, complex medical needs. And it is an area where we feel confident that we will be able to tuition in students. And again, as you can see in Lincoln in terms of their rates, while actually the ALC is actually small, and so it's actually, the rates there are not driven by the specialized program because it's actually a very small percentage of the students. Lincoln also is one of the schools that has our highest percentage of students on IEPs. And so recent highlights, as I shared earlier, we have music therapy in all of those programs every week. The, we use the ACE curriculum, which is an evidence-based curriculum out of the New England Center for Children. And recently, all staff did a training and it's used by both our educators and our para-professionals. And then, as I said, we've got our new RISE classrooms and our new ALC classroom. Any questions on any of that?
So the ACE curriculum is, what type, is that an ASD curriculum?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And it's where the students who are using discreet trial, it's where how data is taken. And it's really a very comprehensive, and part of our contract with the New England Center for Children is they come in and do professional development. And so on Professional Development Day, a number of educators received additional training from them on the ACE curriculum. And we're really trying to, you know, again, with all of our programs, even if they're in different buildings, make sure that we have consistency of practice and best practice and that we're very much aligned so that children are not getting different experiences if they happen to be in different buildings.
Thank you. Sarah, and then Donna.
I'm wondering if you could help me understand when a school has like 24% of students on IEPs, what is your personal opinion about how you staff that school differently for, thinking in terms of general education students and special education? Like, how can you balance that out to not be too high of a demand when another school might have 16 to 18%?
And so that's a good question in terms of looking at student need and sort of where the need is. And then what is the right sort of staffing complement to that need? I think it's also around looking at what kind of professional development do you need to be doing for general educators and special educators? Depending on what's driving, you know, what is driving that at the building level? It is something, and again, you know, being new and sort of looking at this data, we're starting as a group, we meet every Fridays, all our ETFs and all our directors, to really start diving into some of our data, to kind of get underneath it and look at, you know, what do we notice about the rates? And are there things that, to your question, we need to be thinking about in terms of schools based on, you know, we have schools with populations that have a higher level of need? And are we making sure that we have equitable staffing patterns? And that's something we're doing now. Obviously, we're moving into budget season. But we need to be doing that beyond the budget in terms of making sure that we have equitable staffing and that our staffing is very much aligned. And you'll see in our staffing patterns, you know, the number of related services, the number of BCBA's are all respective to the needs of the school so that we don't have staffing where, you know, every school has a 1.0 BCBA. Some schools have a 2.5 BCA, some schools have a 1.0. Really much driven by the needs.
I really like to hear that. I think sometimes, you know, this is probably very personal, but when you get to the point where you're like, I want everybody in world language and I have 24% of kids on IEPs, like, you know, what does that look like, right? So I love your answer there.
Donna?
Thanks so much. Dr. Schmuckler, this is like such an incredibly valuable presentation. And I appreciate all the time and effort that went into it. I wanted to ask, and you just touched on this a tiny bit when you said you meet as a group on Fridays. Can you talk a little bit about what collab time might be available? For example, for learning center teachers across, across schools or across the high schools? I mean, I imagine that's built into the high school schedule, but across schools at the elementary level, do they have, do they have that collaborative time together? And also, I don't know if it'll appear somewhere in your presentation. There is, I know that Superintendent Wong has prioritized staff evaluations and sort of standardizing those and making sure we're on some, you know, a routine schedule. Can you talk about the evaluation process for the staff? Particularly because I'm thinking about some of the direct service providers, for example, who are working in different buildings, what, like, who does evaluations and how does? I'm just interested in how you maintain sort of that consistency when they're working in different spaces.
So let me, let me try to tackle the first one. And I think what you're asking about in terms of collaboration is not necessarily Friday collab time, but how do, how do people skip? Right? Okay, so.
Well, also, I mean, if they do have Friday, I would, I mean, I just didn't realize, is that, does that work? Can you talk a little bit about what happens on Fridays for collab time?
I can't talk a lot, to be honest, about what happens on Friday because that is very much teacher-owned and teacher-directed.
Okay, so it's not happening across buildings?
It does happen across buildings. I mean, that's part of the structure of the Friday School Day. But it is very much teacher-owned that time. So what I mean by that, it's not directed by the directors around, you know, teachers can use it and many of them do. So many of like our programs will do a collaborative time, will meet as a program, and we will be invited to those meetings on a Friday. But it really is at the teacher's choice. But, you know, as you know, consultation is embedded in all IEPs and it's actually a critical component. And so part of people's, all of our folks, our teachers and our related services schedules, our consultation is embedded in them. And so that's a part of, sort of, you know, for different students, it occurs at different times of the day. But that's part of, when you look at a teacher's schedule, you will see times and blocks that are for that consultation and collaboration, both at the child-specific level, but then also at the team level.
I think I was thinking more whether there were opportunities for learning center teachers across, across like grade bands and different buildings to connect and share practices or ideas or things like that.
So it's actually, that's interesting because we've been looking at that. And right now, sort of that cross-district, both vertical and horizontal alignment, is not, is something that's actually missing in the department. And so we've been looking at, how do we bring back, you know, special ed department meetings? How do we bring back, all our service providers do meet. So not our teachers, but our BCBA's meet once a month, our psychologists meet once a month, our SOPs meet once a month. But our learning center teachers certainly meet in their buildings. But they, right now, we don't have a structure where they're meeting with their colleagues at a grade level from other schools. And so that's something we're looking at. And something actually our learning center teachers have asked us to look at in terms of how can we? And that used to happen. So how can we bring that back?
Interesting. Are you also looking at that for ETFs?
So the ETFs meet, we meet twice a month.
Oh, okay, got it. Wonderful.
All the ETFs and all the directors and coordinators meet Friday mornings, first and third Friday of the Monday.
And, sorry, I don't want to take up too much time, but are our evaluations for special educators and direct service providers, are those coming from our special ed directors? Who are doing, who does evaluations typically?
It's a combination. So they're done by the special ed director or by the principal or co-evaluated.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Sure. Any?
I think you can go on, or not. Okay.
And this, I'm not sure if this is the right time for this. You're not, I know there's going to be sort of a second section. Are you still going through the different school buildings?
No, I'm done.
Okay. So I would love to loop sort of all the way back to close to the beginning, if you don't mind. And if you could just educate me a little bit more about 504s, like, and I have a.
Coming up.
That's next.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Okay, great.
That is a good segue. Actually, I wasn't done because Baker, which also doesn't have a specialized program and again, has all of the other programs in terms of learning centers and all of the other related services that all of our other schools have. And as you can see, they, their incidence in terms of students with disabilities is 15%. So you can see, and you'll again, there's a slide further on where you can just look at it cross-comparison, we have wide variation in terms of our IEP rates in buildings. And there's some interesting, as you dig deep into the data, there's some interesting data when the demographics are similar that we want to dig into to say, why is, why is one thing like this? And when sort of what might be working and what's happening in schools that we want to replicate in terms of best practices? And then Lawrence, the same. And these are Anna's schools, again, where there's no specialized programs. We have our learning centers and then all of our related services. And then Lawrence has one of our lowest rates of students on IEPs at 13.8%. And then Ridley, we have our learning centers, which are K2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And you can see there's some variation at schools as to how our learning centers are grade-banded. And again, that's about numbers and need in terms of how those evolve. And then we have our therapeutic learning center at Ridley, which is, we have three classrooms, K2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. And then again, all of the related services. And Ridley, which is one of our largest schools with a specialized program, considered one of our high-need schools, has a rate of 16.5% of students on IEPs. And so recent highlights from all of those schools, as I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, we've had educators from all of our schools doing the Wilson Institute training. It sort of speaks a little bit to your question, Carolyn, around, all of our educators need to be able to work with evidence-based instruction for students with language-based learning disabilities and reading disabilities. And so as we, for many of our students, the students who do need to go to lab are students where it is beyond the level of need at their neighborhood school. And so Baker's schools have done a lot of professional learning focusing on supporting challenging behavior. Lawrence is actually our launch school for our MTSS. And there's been a lot of collaborative, integrated work between general ed and special ed in terms of piloting, the tiered systems of support there. They've done a lot of work on Inclusive School Week, which is coming up next week. The TLC has done a lot of work on their consultation process. And actually, we're using it as the model as we think about how do we improve on our consultation and referral process for our programming? And then there's a lot of integrative work between the math department and special education in terms of differentiated math instruction. So as you can see from the highlights from all of the schools, just a lot of really exciting integrated work happening between general ed and special ed, which is really what you want, right? And so the better that we are integrated and there's a continuum of instruction and services and support, the better our services are for all students, but obviously particularly for students with disabilities. Okay, so we're going to move on, sort of differentiating and speak a little bit about sort of 504s. And I think one of the things that there's often a lot of confusion about from families, many times from outside doctors and pediatricians, is the difference between a diagnosis and an educational disability. And as you can see there, a diagnosis does not an educational disability make. And so one of the critical pieces and the function of an IEP team is an IEP team and a 504 team are there to determine, is there an impairment, right? For an IEP team is, are the characteristics in which a student presents with, and we don't need a disability and we don't need a label, but does the student's characteristics combine to say that there might be the presence of an educational disability? And if there is an educational disability, does that disability prevent them from making effective progress? And if so, do they need specialized instruction and/or related services? And that's really the critical component around, a lot of people ask like, how do students become eligible, right? And, you know, why do we have so many students in special education, which we actually don't, you'll see when we look at the data further on, comparative to our like districts? And so that's sort of a critical piece, right? And so we're looking at, so for doctors and diagnoses and the DSM, that's a very medical model. And our job in schools is really looking at what is an educational disability, which is very different from a medical diagnosis or a diagnosis given by an outside physician. And so I'm just going to illustrate this with an example of three students who all have the same diagnosis and who all receive services and supports in a very different way in school by how that diagnosis manifests. So our first student, who is Max, has ADHD. Max has master strategies. And he has figured out how to manage his ADHD, both at home and school. And he's very well-served through general education. So with that diagnosis, he is in school and doing well and making effective progress. Shauna, Max's friend, has ADHD. And her ADHD is actually impacting her ability to access the classroom, to access education. And she requires accommodations in order to access learning. So she might need to sit close to the teacher. She might need some scheduled breaks, right? And so her ADHD manifests in a way that she needs a 504 plan. And then our last friend, Ronald, also has ADHD, same diagnosis. And Ronald's not making effective progress in school. He is not able to access the classroom. And he's not learning commensurate with his abilities. Ronald's team determines that his, the way his disability manifests, it is an educational disability. And he requires specialized instruction from both a special educator and an occupational therapist. And due to that, Ronald has an IEP, right? So three students, same diagnosis, but very different intervention, instructions, and supports based on each child's individual characteristics and what they need. Any questions?
I'm just going to comment because this is an area that people ask a lot, what's the difference between a 504 and a IEP? So a 504, there's an accommodation. IEP, you're getting specialized instruction, right? And then if you're making effective progress, you're in the blue box. So. The other thing I just wanted to comment, that these are questions that we receive from the Revenue and Expenditure Study Committee about what is the process for getting services? And we gave an answer. You will get a full explanation in the fall. So this is the full explanation as Karen proceeds.
And so it's multi-pronged. And so you'll see for students who receive special education services, as we discussed, you need to meet the criteria for one of the 10 disability categories in Massachusetts. And then your lack of effective progress needs to be directly related to the disability. It needs to be causal. It needs to be causal, right? So that's prong number two. Prong number one, you need to meet it. Prong number two, there needs to be a causal relationship between lack of progress and your disability. And then, um, prong number three, you need to look at have students received high-quality instruction and interventions and have continued to demonstrate a lack of effective progress. And so in terms of, a lot of people ask, so what is the process, right? And so again, students go through a robust evaluation process. And it's through that evaluation process that people determine, number one, is there an educational disability, right? Again, is it causal to the lack of effective progress? So it's not about something else. It's not about, you know, attendance. It's not about, uh, a student who's new to the country, who is not yet English proficient. It's not about behavior. It's not about discipline. It's not about that they haven't received evidence-based reading or math instruction. We talked a little bit about that in the disproportionality in terms of specific learning disability. That is a rule out, right? If you haven't received good, evidence-based reading instruction, that is actually a rule out for an SLD. So all of those things are critical. And then they must need special education to make progress, right? And that's both, um, related service or specialized instruction from a special ed teacher. Any questions on that? So disability, disability is causal to the student's lack of effective progress. And then they need specialized instruction. So those things could be true and a student doesn't need specialized instruction, they need accommodations, right? And so that would differentiate between, does a student need accommodations? They would therefore be on a 504 plan. Do they need specialized instruction and/or related services? They would be on an IEP. Yeah.
And the way you explained it, I, I think I know the answer, but with a 504 plan, um, is there ever like OT or any services? Or it's only a plan for sort of doing things a different way?
They can be. Um, it's not typical, but they can be related services.
But not typically.
It's not typical. And so, so as I said, it's a very, and it's a very complex process, right? And it's probably one of the most important decisions that both families and teams make in terms of students' educational needs. And I think one of, one of the pieces, and I think we, I spoke a little about this a few weeks ago, is students may struggle for a variety of reasons. And sometimes when all your services are in the special ed box, you have to put the child there in order to get services, right? And so one of the pieces around the work on, on multi-tiered systems of support is to make sure that we have robust services in general education for students who are struggling, who don't have disabilities, right? Because special ed resources need to be reserved for students who have disabilities. And because of those disabilities, need the specialized in service. And it's integral that we also make sure that we provide services for students without disabilities who are struggling. Um, and so I think that's, that's really the work, um, and the good work that the district's engaged in, um, right now. And then these are the, yeah.
And so again, so you were connecting it to disproportionality, which was, um, the prior presentation. So Karen has really laid out clearly disability and then impact or affect, you know, affective progress. Disproportionality is that there might not have been the disability, but there might have been supports that are needed, which is the work of MTSS. So you see how it all fits together.
So these are the disability categories. And when a team is looking at characteristics, um, you look at, does the student present with characteristics that fits with one of these 10 disability categories? Okay, you know, two of the cornerstones of, um, special education is FAP, uh, Free Appropriate Public Education, and LRE, the Least Restrictive Environment, um, which we'll talk a little bit, um, about it. I gave you the link to, um, one of sort of one of the seminal, um, sort of case law cases, which really outlined what's the, what's the district and what are school substantive, um, obligations in terms of IEPs that are reasonably calculated to provide students with the ability to make appropriate progress in light of the child's circumstances, right? At the, what the child should be doing based on, um, what that child can do. And one of the important things in that case law is that every child needs to have the chance to meet challenging objectives, right? Which is really important that we make sure that the work that we're doing is standards-aligned for students. And so one of the things, and this is sort of the theory of action for all special education, is that if students with disabilities have access and meaningful access to the curriculum frameworks, we will begin to close the, the gaps that we have between students with disabilities and neighbors. And so the work that we're doing and sort of some of the highlights that you saw in terms of the work on curriculum, the work on professional development between general education teachers and special education teachers are all in service of closing those gaps, uh, for students and making sure that their experience in general ed and special ed is integrated and merged. And it's not, they're not siloed in terms of how we serve students. I think one of the things we spoke about in the literacy work is that there's a through line between what children are experiencing in, um, in general ed literacy instruction. We're using the same materials, we're using foundations. And for students who might need more, we're using Wilson or OG, which are all aligned in similar ways, uh, in terms of educating students. And you want to look at it from, what does the student's experience look like and feel like as they make their way through the day between general education and special education? So we're going to jump in and look at some data. So again, this data, and it's going to be a little different. If you went onto Desi's website, it's going to be slightly higher because Desi's is from last year point in time. And this is, as we speak today, um, our rate is 17.9%. And so you'll see it's come down a little bit, um, of service, students who receive services, um, through an IEP. Those are our rates just over the last, um, six years. And again, you can see in general, holding pretty steady, they've gone up and down. Um, but you can sort of see the lowest in 21 at 17% and where we're sitting, um, where we're sitting now. And so we've seen, and I, again, haven't been able to dig in the data to see what's, you know, 18.6% last year, which is where we were in terms of Desi and Sims, and where we are now in terms of, is that an enrollment-based drop or what that is? I don't, I don't know in terms of that analysis.
Do you know the state average? Do you know the state average?
The state average is much higher. I don't know exactly what it is, but I can get that for you. And then this is sort of, you've been seeing that on the slides, but this is just so you can just take a quick look at just the IEP percentages in the district. Um, and this is our in-district, these are our students who are in Brookline. As you heard from me, Dean, um, we have students who get services only, um, across the district. So that's pre-K through 22, students can get, come in for services. Um, and so our number of students on IEPs are higher than this, but this is just students who are in Brookline. And we also provide, you know, services for students who are homeschooled as well. They are not in these counts. These are only students who are in the buildings.
And I, I want to remind everyone what Karen said earlier, that some of them with the higher percentages are also schools with the, with, um, more specialized program classes. But what's surprising is that some of the ones with lower percentages also have-
Correct.
Yes. So it's, um, it, these are actually remarkable numbers, which is why, anyway, they're, they're very, very, this is really compelling data-
Yeah.
On that, um, the process of selection and delivery of services is, is very effective.
And these are the, this is the data we wanted to start jumping into to sort of see like, what are those patterns? Are there, you know, are there eligibility pieces that we can work on? So what is, what is the data telling us in terms of what are the influences we can make? And so this is the snapshot of our disability categories across the district. So as I said earlier, you know, one of our highest categories, students with autism and then students with specific learning disabilities. And those are two of our more robust programs in terms of students with needs. Um, we also have a number of students, obviously, um, with communication. And so that's just how it breaks out in terms of disability.
And obviously, there's overlap here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Say more.
There's overlap. This doesn't equal-
You have more than one disability category.
These numbers, or do these numbers equal 100?
These are primary, this is primary.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Primary disability.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Jesse says, um, he looked, it's 19% is the state average.
We just, thank you. Thank you, Jesse. And then these, again, uh, you saw some of this data last year. These are out-of-district rates, um, just shifting into a little bit of out-of-district data. Um, so again, the rates have been pretty, pretty steady. The FY '26, we've come down a bit from where we were in June, um, but, um, it was slightly higher. Um, and again, as you know, it's very fluid in terms of students who move out, students who move in. Um, but this is point in time where we are right now in terms of out-of-district rates. And then I'm going to click it on, and if you want to look on, so one of the things that, um, if that helps you see it any better, I think you have one.
Cut smaller.
But we have it in the- You do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you trying to enlarge it? Is that what?
Well.
Anyway, you could, you have it.
You can see where Brookline is.
It's linked in the presentation. So one of the things, and so this is benchmarked to all of the districts that Desi benchmarks to. And it's also all of the districts that the town has been using in terms of benchmarking. And as you can see, we're planning, but it's just seen to you. Um, Brookline has the lowest rate of students in out-of-district placements at 5.3%. Then all of our benchmark districts, which again, Desi, um, puts districts together based on demographics and similarities, as well as the town, the districts that the town is using. And so again, that is really a testament to the robust nature of our programming and our programs in, um, in district. And again, um, I think a really important, um, benchmark. Any questions?
No, just a, I think this is a really important slide for our ERSC colleagues to see because this is-
It was in the data that was sent to them. Again, uh, some important data. And then this just gives you out-of-stud- district students by grade. Um, one of the things we're paying attention to is the increase in students in the lower grades in terms of, and really looking at what's, you know, what's driving that and what do we need to do? And one of the things that, um, you will see in some of the highlights, which I'll speak to a little bit, is we're about to launch our flexible support, um, pilot program, uh, at the beginning of January. And we certainly hope-
Karen, do you mind speaking more closely to the mic? I couldn't, you said we're about to launch and then it got quiet.
Sure.
Thank you. Oh, so much better. Thank you.
Okay. We're about to launch our, um, it was one of the things that's in the CCEIS IDA grant, that I think you've, you've seen, um, but we're about to launch the flexible support, um, pilot, um, which again is, um, really to help students who are in behavioral crisis or who might need stabilization and support. Um, and so we're hoping that that, um, will provide another layer of support to students who might need a very intensive but short-term intervention.
At what grade level?
Um, it's elementary. Um, so it's for all, all elementary. Um, but some of the areas of need that we've seen there has been actually in our younger grades. And so we're seeing a level of need in our younger grades, both in district, but also out of district. Um, and so we're hoping that will support, um, support schools. And so then just some of our updates and priorities. Um, we are always working to ensure high-quality continuum of instruction, services and support. Um, you've heard from Matt, a, a lot about the work that we've done around belonging and engagement and supporting students' identities and the intersectionality of students' identities is really bearing out in our data, uh, in terms of attendance and engagement and social emotional learning and wellbeing. So we always are always, you know, have laser focus on that because, as we know, without that, it's very hard for students to learn. There's always a focus, you heard from Tricia, on mental health and mental wellness and wellbeing. Uh, you heard from Robin around, um, all of the work that's certainly been done at the high school, but it's also been done district-wide on maximizing inclusion opportunities across sports, arts, or everything that we do. We've focused a lot this year and certainly through, through the spring on making sure that our contracted services were efficient and effective. Um, so we have a number of new providers. Um, and we have a, a really robust system in terms of our contracting, which we've had no issues. Um, and so that's really been, um, very important. And those are critical services for our students. Um, and then we're focusing on maximizing revenue. So we're continuing to focus on making sure that we are maximizing our Medicaid revenue. And as you know, I know, Bob, you asked a question about, has there been any impact at the IDA funding level? There hasn't been, but there is impact at the Medicaid level. Um, and so we haven't, we're not seeing a huge, um, impact yet. Um, but as Medicaid gets cut, we will be impacted in terms of-
So i- is that from the, the, um, enormous ugly bill in-
Correct.
January of '27, it will hit?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
And so, and we're also, we're always looking at circuit breaker. And as you know, some of that is making sure that our IEPs are written, um, uh, to support circuit breaker claiming. Um, and then you've heard a lot about, um, our work around tuitioning students. And so the hope will be that by fall, um, we will be, we will be ready and able to have students tuitioning into programs where we have space.
Mariah and then Donna have questions.
Thank you. In the October enrollment report that we were presented last month, I guess it was, the out-of-district number was listed as 66. I was curious, um, and I was surprised by that because of all the conversations we'd had last spring. But then especially with your slide now, I think you had on the prior slide, was it 81? I can't remember now.
So those, those-
Go ahead.
Numbers include tuition. So, I mean, include settlements, tuition. So that, those numbers are full tuition. So I will, I'm not sure what, why the October number didn't have it. Um, but the reports you will get will always include students who are out of district because they've been placed by the district and students who are on settlements. So that's, that's what, that's what you're seeing in the differential there. Yep.
That's what I thought when you were presenting the different numbers, that maybe it would be helpful to go back and update the enrollment presentation to reflect that. Thank you.
Thanks. Donna and then Bob.
Sorry, I lowered my hand because Karen, it looks like there was another slide that you were about to dive into. So I'm, I'm happy to wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want to go, Bob?
Yeah. Karen, the breadth and depth of your knowledge is Brabdi-Nagian. Did I say that correctly?
Say it again, is?
Is Brabdi-Nagian. Gulliver's Travels, the Brabdi-Nagian people, they're very big, huge. And, and the clarity of the presentation, that, of you and your team, uh, just puts a bunch of exclamation points on that wealth of knowledge. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to you. All right, last slide. Um, so most of this you've already heard. So again, we're continuing to focus on literacy, um, on Wilson and our OG work with a lot of professional development. And we have ongoing coaching. So one of our, um, pieces is, um, ongoing coaching for our teachers, uh, in person by an OG expert. And so that's going on throughout the district while people are learning, which is really the best model of making sure that people are continuing to improve their practice. Um, we continue to partner with OTL in very exciting work around MTSS with the new teacher center. Um, a lot of focus on ensuring student and staff safety. So making sure that our safety care training, which we do through QBS, is robust, that all our staff are trained. Um, and as I said, we're launching the flexible support team, uh, which again, is to support students who might be in, you know, behavioral crisis and really need a wraparound stabilization, immediate rapid response. Um, again, working around supporting our paraprofessionals who are just critical- Again, working around supporting our paraprofessionals who are just critical to all the work that we do. And that's with really making sure that we are providing professional development that is really targeted at the areas that they have identified need. Addressing disproportionality, so we have an ongoing work group that Matt co-leads in terms of really looking at the data and looking at all of those things, sort of things that you've, you've referenced in terms of our patterns of identification, what's happening, and making sure that we have a... In January, our ETFs and school psychologists are all coming together to do, we did a deep dive into some of our data around eligibility, actually, after the presentation. And so we're all coming together to look at that data and to look at just our practices in terms of evaluations and eligibility. And then we're always looking at enhancing our programs. And so we're doing a number of mini-program reviews right now and to make sure that we are just doing everything we can to be innovative and make sure that all of our practices are consistent with clarity across the district.
And that is student services.
Karen, that's an amazing, amazing presentation and the work, so.
Amazing.
And thanks to all your team for a late night staying with us to, to go through this. Donna, question?
Thank you. This is absolutely incredible, and there's so much information. I think I, I said that earlier, and I'm so appreciative. I have one quick question and then maybe two longer questions. I had heard from a couple of parents about the transition for, I think it's our teacher for the deaf. And so can you reassure folks that there'll be a communication coming out soon about what the transition plan is?
Actually, we, as you discussed that today, so.
Oh, yay.
Who left, actually, has done the, the work on. We are in process of contracting with Clark School, who are going to be providing that service while we have our teacher out on maternity leave.
Ooh, that's good.
So as soon as that is finalized, we will be sending out a communication.
Thank you so much. My other question is, and Val, maybe I can lean on you to remind me if you have, if you know what I'm talking about. But several years ago, when we did the special education review, there was some, there was some information that came out of that, the consultant's report that had to do with the number, I can't remember if it was the number of like, the grid, I don't know how they quantified the grid services, but that they, the grid services tended to increase at the, at the high school level, but from the elementary to the high school level, instead of, you know, obviously, we wanted to go the opposite direction. And I'm wondering, as you're looking at data, have you seen anything related to that? And is what I'm saying ringing a bell to anybody?
Robyn seems to have her hand up.
Yeah.
I can potentially answer that because, for example, if you are an eighth-grade student receiving academic support through a learning center.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, if you're an eighth-grade student getting academic support or executive functioning support from a learning center, you may have on your grid three times 30. When you come to the high school, you need a learning center class to fit into your schedule, which meets four times 55. So that number increases because we want students to have filled schedules and things that fit into schedules nicely along with their other classes. If you were a ninth grader and had two times 55, which you could, you then have to make, you have to then pair that with, for example, wellness or an elective. And that gets tricky because most of the schedule options at the high school are full blocks and not partial blocks until you get older. And ninth graders, for example, don't have free blocks in general. And so they need to be fully scheduled. So sometimes it just is the translation issue at the high school. Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense. And at the time, I remember thinking something similar to what you said, and they had flagged it sort of as something, I want to say, an area of concern, but it sounds like, it sounds like it, it really isn't. It's just a logistical, it's like a logistical solution, right?
Yeah, it's logistical, and it also sometimes is like commensurate with the amount of work and expectation that happens as you go up and you have more, you know, a heavier course load than you might have in an elementary setting in terms of homework, you know, of amount of things that you need to organize and prioritize and do it more independently.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks, Robyn. Okay, so my last question is about 504s at the high school. When we have accommodations at the high school that might, and, and I think about it, the reason I'm calling out the high school is because I think about it differently than how it would happen in the elementary school. But when there are accommodations that require additional, for example, additional time on tests or a separate space for, for, for a student on a 504, where is that, how is the planning happening for that? Like, where is that stuff happening? Because the high school is gigantic, and I just think it's sort of more operationally complex.
So similar to, similar to at the elementaries, the guidance counselors oversee 504s. And so all the sort of operational and structural piece around who gets what gets managed and at that level in terms of making sure that both on a day-to-day level but also on a test level or SAT level or whatever students are doing, that they're getting their accreditation.
I can just add some logistical examples. So sometimes assessments are created to only be 30 minutes. And so the extended time can happen within a 60-minute block. Sometimes teachers give one page at a time. And so if a student only gets to two pages, they then can make arrangements with that teacher to make up the last page. And that usually happens in coordination with a guidance counselor or tutorial teacher or, you know, office hours or after-school or a variety of different ways depending on the teacher and the student's arrangement. I would say that this is, this is something that the high school grapples with all of the time because it's hard to find separate spaces for many students and find the supervision to have that happen. And, you know, teachers are very creative with their time and with making arrangements with curriculum coordinators and other teachers to make sure that happens and also in coordination with the students, other teachers, in case they're late or have, you know, need a pass to get to the next class. But there are some tips that just happen in general education in terms of the teachers' planning and organizing around assessments that allows that to happen more naturally for students. And so people aren't stigmatized or missing other things in order to get that accommodation.
It seems like, it seems like a massive undertaking for guidance counselors to also manage 504s. Am I, is it, is it, is it, or it's just that's?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I am assuming it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, Matt's, Matt's in the.
It is a lot of work, and it is part of, and it is part of the role. So I think it is, it is a lot of work. And as you heard, it's a lot of, you know, again, different from at the elementary level. A lot of logistics, complexities at the high school that certainly, you know, you don't experience at an elementary level that they have to factor in.
Thank you. And I, and I want to just give a shout out to all of our guidance counselors at our schools and to Matt for all the work they're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay, go ahead, quick.
No, 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 that's okay. And it's, it's super quick, and it's, so. Amazing, thank you, all the things. This slide that breaks out the settlements, and I know we've talked about this before. If I'm a member of the public, and even if I'm a school committee member who's ramping up my knowledge, I would benefit from like a little more understanding of the difference, like why that's broken out there, what that sort of means, if it's a question of budget or, so just, and it doesn't have to be answered.
Obviously, it's the way the district has reported it. Other places, it's not separate. Tuition is tuition.
Right, yeah.
In some ways, it would be helpful just to have sometimes an out-of-district number, I think, because it complicates.
I mean, we can.
Yeah, yeah.
We can just shift it that way.
And I think it would just need to be shifted in the budget because that is how it's put in the budget book, which is why if you give a number and you go to the budget book, your numbers aren't going to match.
Right, right, right.
You know, I think it's a decision, again, it has just, that's how it's been.
Yep, so you're capturing sort of a process nuance, but I think.
Inherited.
For the, yeah, yeah, for the purposes of public facing, probably bottom line is what people are looking.
Because it's all tuition, right? It's tuition.
Yeah.
And then it's, it's really how, how that tuition has been addressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also think it invites a different level of questioning if somebody sees something. But if you, if you look at FY '21 to '26, the bottom-line numbers, we're within a couple students either direction all of those years. And so to, to me, that's sort of the headline to the community is where a student or two here or there, it's been pretty even in the sort of 80 to 85-ish range for five years.
Yeah.
The cost is much higher, but the student numbers are the same.
Okay.
I mean, the cost for the schools is, is sort of what it is, and they have the ability to go up by what percentage was it this last, like a couple of years ago?
Couple of years ago was 14. What we're seeing currently in the new requests is anywhere between 15 to 25%.
And that's approved by the state on that.
Approved by the Operational Service Division.
Yeah. Thank you.
Or did you ask him more?
No, I just was going to move on to the budget, if you want to.
No, I want to, so, so thank you to, to Robyn and all the staff that came to present. And I'm just going to try to pull us out from the, from the detail. And so if you remember from the prior presentation on MTSS, the triangle of services. And so student services isn't just special education. Special education is a big part of it, but it's really any intervention that a student receives. So amazingly, out of everything that Karen talked about, there's also EL, and there's also McKinney-Vento. And so I just wanted to capture that that's all part of the triangle. And then the focus on MTSS is that lower is the bottom part. And actually, that's something that OSS and OTL own this part. And Matt is a big part of that intersection of OTL and OSS on that. So the data for Brookline is very, very strong. The number of students that you have out of district for this size population, the percent of students that are on IEPs for this population. Also, you know that the demographic of Brookline is strong advocacy, and that is your percentage. You know people are, are going for those services. So those, that data is so compelling. And the, the reason why I asked Karen to do a bigger presentation to school committees because it will be recorded and it can be replayed. There's just too much information to really completely absorb all in one setting. And we can go back and do that, which is why I just insert in the triangle, there's also EL and McKinney-Vento. And just, so while our data is really great, there are areas of improvement. So as Karen talked about disproportionality. And so that's where an investment in MTSS would, would, is our hope that theory of action will support and improve on disproportionate, so to mitigate disproportionality. The other I want to emphasize is the, this is an investment that Brookline has made over time in its in-district programs. And the data should assure you that that investment has been, it's, it's been good and fruitful. But I also want to emphasize that the quality of the program can only be sustained through continuous training, continuous networking, continuous, just because things are always changing and we're always learning about what best service we can deliver. So it's part of investing in the programs that you have. And so I say this because when we go to the budget, that I can call back on what it is and connect it to what you heard tonight. Anyways, but I, it's, you have a lot of great educators delivering these services and great leaders and the presentation, just to thank all of you that, that put time into doing that.
Thank you once again. Moving on to our update on the multi-year budget projection.
So, so I'm going to make remarks. I know Susan is here too, but I'm going to make remarks on this part of the agenda to share with you about the update on our work on the multi-year budget projection forecast. First, I want to remind everyone that the district does not typically present a detailed version of a projected budget for the next fiscal year until February. And even though we are well into the second quarter of the current fiscal year, there is a lot that still happens between now and the end of this school year that has an impact on our future financial planning. It's not at all unusual that we're working on building the budget to give us the most accurate assessment of what we will need in a year yet to happen. But while this is an annual endeavor, the second point I want to remind everyone is that we are working on an accelerated timeline. The timeline is accelerated in order to meet the need to best inform our community at large about what may be necessary for an override determination to fund a budget in the next year and in the years to come. So while this is an annual process, we are, we're ahead of where we, where we usually are. But it's also necessary in the context of, of this year. Much of the school department's district-level and building-based leadership team has devoted a great deal of time and effort to accelerate our processes while also making sure we are meeting the present and sometimes pressing needs of our students. So it's both and while we're doing this, that our students will always remain our priority. And that's where, where our focus will be as needed. We remain a new leadership team, and we want to be sure to provide the best accuracy possible. We have approached this task not to simply carry forward accounts as they are, but it had been working to understand more deeply what we have in order to determine what we need to ensure, what is necessary to meet the expectations of our community to sustain the quality of our programs. The multi-year budget present projections we shared with you at the school committee meeting of 11/13 for FY '27 to FY '31 were increases of 9, 4, 5, 5, and 4%. Tonight, we are not ready to adjust the update for the projections numerically, and they remain at 9, 4, 5, 5, and 4. However, we are getting closer to achieving better clarity on a better update for you. We anticipate arriving at an aggregate number of greater clarity no later than the next school committee meeting of 12/18 or as soon as we can before that date. As we have described earlier, we have been looking closely at our accounts and have been considering possibilities for reductions, reorganization, restoration, and growth. We have also looked at potential sources of revenue, which you heard Karen touch upon. Some of what we have been looking at will necessarily impact current staff, which is always a difficult matter. It is very important for me to be able to impress upon everyone that such impacts must be addressed with the best sensitivity we can offer. I can assure you that we will update our projections with fidelity, but how much of the underlying detail I will show publicly will be limited prior to the new year. I also want to say too, very importantly, I appreciate the work of our senior leadership teams across the district and across our buildings, as well as the support and advice of. of school, town, and community leadership. We would not be at this place without that support. I understand the interest in the work that we are doing, but I, but I think you appreciate that we want to do it carefully and we want to do it sensitively. And so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Questions? Silence from the committee. Thank you for that, Superintendent Wong, and we will resume this conversation as soon as we're able.
Can I, Bella, was the, were those written remarks?
Yes.
Do you mind sharing them with the committee? Assuming they're like typed up, that you could just share them so we have them in writing too?
Okay, I have one typo I have to fix. So just give me a sec afterward.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Bella, is, is there a process for members of the school committee to offer insights, suggestions? How do we do that? Say I have an idea.
I, I feel like people have been sharing them, so you are welcome to share. Yes.
Good.
Yes. Yeah. I think we've been receiving ideas along the way.
Yeah, because I haven't seen details of what's, what your thinking is, actually.
Nobody has, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, but you, we should feel free to say, what about this? What about that? What about, think?
Right, and I, I have, I identified the categories, and we are in fact working, we're, we're working actively under all, everything that I've listed, includes, including possible sources of revenue. But it just, in the end, it, some of this is going to affect staff.
Okay, thank you.
In general, I think, Bella, that if people have ideas of something that might be impacting workload or staffing in general, you would want them to share those with you privately and not in a public forum. Is that correct?
That, that would be helpful, yes.
Okay, so moving on to subcommittee in these own reports, does anybody have a report? Okay. Number seven, any new business? Okay. Sorry, did you have new business?
New business, well, yeah, an update.
Okay.
I sent Betsy an email during the meeting with a link to the school menu, so it should be in your inbox with just a hyperlink, and if you could go to it. Can, yeah. So I think I had mentioned in the past that when I joined the school committee a year and a half ago, a group of parents in the community approached me about working with the district on bringing a kosher meal program into the public schools. And over the last 17 months, I've worked with Susan, with Linus and Susan, and then Sasha Palmer and her team. And we were able to, as a team, thank you, yeah, you can hold it there for a second. We were, we were able to work as a team to come up with a, a unique kind of menu that other districts apparently are already asking to get more information about, as well as at least one college, because it actually tracks with the thematic menu that the regular cafeteria line has. So the, the students that have this dietary need can procure their food at the cafeteria line and get food that, of course, strictly kosher, but still, at least in theme, very similar to what the kids are getting on the non-kosher line. And so we brought, it's now in full operation as of this Monday, this past Monday, running every day, and we've got a, a menu actually that's in the public. So if you scroll down just a little more on the menus there, you'll see, Betsy, so you'll see on the left under elementary schools, the last item is a K to eight kosher menu, and under high schools, the first item is nine to 12 kosher menu. And if you click on either of those, try the elementary school, maybe, I mean, it all works. Yeah, so you can say, "Accept that." And you'll see, I mean, you might want to try to zoom it out a little bit. Well, the most significant thing about this menu, well, from, from the kosher eating side, is that no pre-ordering is required. So kids just come up to the cafeteria line, there's a sign that says kosher meal available, and, and the students take it and, and consume it. And if you scroll, if you, can you zoom it out, just zoom in a little bit to make it a little larger? Parents and caregivers were, who, who strictly keep kosher, made a, as, in my role as sort of advising of food services as to how to make this as like perfect as possible, made very sure as we were choosing the food types to have actually the kosher certification labels actually on the website. So if you look at every item there, there's something in parentheses at the end that describes who certifies the food. And so the parents and students, I had a second grader ask me at FRR the other day, how do I know, how could I prove to him it was kosher, right? So, so I, I explained to the second grader in the cafeteria, you know, where the, where the symbols were, and he was quite satisfied and dug in. So what you see here, different than, for example, some other large school districts that, public school districts, is that this is not a menu where as you go across from day to day, you see the same TV dinner kind of thing heated up for, for any student on any day for breakfast and lunch. This is a different menu every day, and it's going to rotate through about a two- to three-week cycle before they start to see similar foods. And so this is unique in that it, first of all, provides something that goes with the themes, it's, fully meets the USDA requirements, and very importantly, besides the sense of belonging that it gives to students and their families within the district, also is coming to the district at zero cost. This is fully reimbursed because the food and the way that it's been procured by Sasha Palmer's team is actually coming in through the same distribution channels, but from other vendors, and the cost is neutral. So we're getting paid back just we are, we are, just like we are for the non-kosher food. And the final thing I'd say is that if you go back through the history books, Bob will know this, of course, how old public schools at Brookline are. So BHS was established in the town hall in 1843. And, right?
Good.
Thank you. School committee members need to know these things, right? So, so we're, so we're, you know, we're quite along the lines of, you know, almost a century and a half or so. And so this is the first time in public schools of Brookline that, in a, in a large district like ours actually, that we have such a nine-school building launch all at the same time with all of the kitchen staff, food services staff, doing their very best. They've been trained, we've established protocols, and everything's running smoothly. Parents are, you know, satisfied, happy, I mean, you know? And so it's the first time in, ever, in the public schools here, and so it's a, an interesting model that other districts are already looking at. So we'll, we'll see where, we'll see where it goes, but we've got a lot of happy, happy young kids, and even in the high school, by the way, just as a final comment, in the high school, a question came up about kids who have a class like on the third floor at Reno and then have to get down to lunch and then get back to a following after-lunch class, that they wouldn't have enough time to wait at the cafeteria line. And so Sasha's team put together a grab-and-go at the grab-and-go station. So now there's kosher food available there for them that's in a box, has a kosher label on it, they can run in, take it and get, you know, get eaten, get back to their class on time. So we're, we're just looking, we're, we're still collecting feedback on numbers and moving it forward. So just wanted to give you that update. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessie. Bob, you had something?
Yeah, I have a question. As, excuse me, as you know, I'm newish on the school committee. Were you doing this as a private citizen or as a representative of the school committee? Just curious.
I was, I was asked by a, a, a big group of families after I joined the school committee whether it would be possible to make, get this project forward, because it had been tried through surveys over the last five or six years, and then nothing happened. It's sort of, there were surveys, and then there was no response. And so when, after, after I joined the school committee, I met with the superintendent, and I explained what I thought I'd want to do, and he guided me to Dr. Givens, and we met and talked and did a lot of research, and then eventually moved it through. So my, my role was really, I guess, you know, as an, say, like an expert in kosher, to be able to make sure that what we were going to do was 100% acceptable to the end, to the consumers of the food.
So you were sanctioned, but you were empowered by the superintendent to do this?
Yeah. Yeah, so in a collaboration with the, with the food services team.
Now, the reason I ask is if someone wants to have another kind of menu, do they just go out and try to make that happen, or?
Well, I think there's like for halal, for example.
Yeah.
About two years ago or so. So what happened there is that there were parents that made a request in, through the school system to say, "We would like, we want to have halal," and they made it happen. But for kosher, it got much more complicated because it's much more stricter regime than halal.
Okay.
And so every little detail had to be worked out, because as you may be aware, there are no kosher kitchen facilities within the public schools of Brookline buildings. So every, anything that has to be heated up has to be heated up in a non-kosher oven, but in a way that results in kosher food, which is what we've accomplished.
Complicated. Thank you. Thank you, Jessie.
So, thank you. So we have, bear with me for a long preamble. I move to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, Unit A, B, and C, if an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the committee, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with ASME food service employees, school building employees, and Brookline Educational Secretaries Association employees, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to anticipated litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committee, and the chair so declares. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the November 13th, 2025 meeting. Is there a second? Suzanne seconded it. Suzanne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Bob, Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. We will not be returning to open session. No.